The fifty-seventh annual Grand American Coon Hunt at the Orangeburg County Fair is Friday. Organizers say every year this event attracts thousands of visitors.
The Grand American Coon Hunt is about tradition, it's about family, about Southern culture, and it's about horse birds.
There will be three hundred dogs participating in Friday's event where they compete to see who's the best at running a raccoon up a tree. Organizers say a major highlight is people coming together and having fun.
The welcoming attitude of the community and all the people here in Orangeburg County and city.
McKee says there are usually more than one hundred vendors, but this year they expect to see half that number due to many being impacted by the pandemic. The Chamber of Commerce says this event is still expected to bring a lot of money to the city.
We're trying to get people staying at the hotels, eating at the restaurants, buying from the local stores.
People are being asked to social distance and wear masks. There will also be hand washing stations across the fairgrounds. Gay soaping on Friday at eight AM in Orangeburg. Nija Hood, News nineteen, WLTX.
We're going to spend a few minutes today now being reminded of one of the historic lyrics of American history. Lyric in historical significance not unlike this poem from eighteen ninety-two written by Walt Whitman.
The runaway slave came to my house and stopped outside. I heard his motions crackling in the twigs of the woodpile. Through the swung half door of the kitchen, I saw him limpsy and weak, and went where he sat on a log and let him in and assured him, and brought water and filled a tub for his sweated body and bruised feet, and remember perfectly well his revolving eyes and his awkwardness, and remember putting plasters on the galls of his neck and ankles. He stayed with me a week before he was recuperated and passed north. I had him sit next to me at table, my firelock leaned in the corner.
That's an excerpt from Leaves of Grass or this poem from nineteen thirty-eight by Langston Hughes.
Oh, let my land be a land where liberty is crowned with no false patriotic wreath, but opportunity is real and life is free. Equality is in the air we breathe. I am the poor white fooled and pushed apart. I am the Negro bearing slavery scars. I'm the red man driven from the land. I am the immigrant clutching the hope I seek and finding only the same old stupid plan of doggy dog of mighty crush the weak. I am the farmer, bondsman to the soil. I am the worker sold to the machine. I am the Negro servant to you all.
These are lyrics of an American nation we learn always struggling to perfect itself and to be a more perfect union. But no, this is only a partial history, a partial poetic history. Here now this lyric from a man whose name adorns one of the most famous buildings in Washington DC, the Russell Senate Office Building, where mostly white men spoke to history in grand lyrics of the principles they held dear. Richard Russell said this. As one who was born reared in the atmosphere of the Old South with six generations of my forebears now resting beneath Southern soil, I am willing to go as far and make as great a sacrifice to preserve and ensure white supremacy in the social, economic, and political life of our state as any man who lives within her borders. That's Richard Russell, the senator from Georgia who was willing to lay down his life for white supremacy. It feels and sounds upsetting so far out of the mainstream of today's politics. Coming from a man who quite legally and proudly and under banner headlines in the leading newspapers of the day filibustered a civil rights bill back in nineteen thirty-five, an anti lynching bill, he spoke for six straight days to preserve the legality of hanging black people in public by their necks until they were dead, an act we would call terrorism today, called patriotism then. I want to warn you that the language of this legal American politics we like to think of in the abstract is only going to get more upsetting in this little segment, and perhaps you may want to stop listening now, but I hope you don't. At precisely eight fifty-four PM on August twenty-eighth nineteen fifty-seven, the longest continuous filibuster in US history began as a final stand against a tide of history that was overwhelming the forces of racism and white supremacy that dominated the South and the Southern lawmakers in the US Congress.
The Southern revolt against President Truman reaches its climax at Birmingham under the states' rights banner. Venerable Alfalfa Bill Murray comes out of retirement to join in the protests against the president's civil rights program. More than six thousand flock to the Rump Convention to select the presidential ticket. In the forefront of the move are Alabama and Mississippi delegates. Thirteen Southern states are represented in the uproar session which precedes the nomination of Governor Thurmond of South Carolina and Fielding Wright of Mississippi as party standard bearer.
A decade before Strom Thurmond's filibuster in nineteen fifty-seven, Southern state separatist leaders had revolted in opposition to President Truman's civil rights platform. Democrats dubbed themselves Dixiecrats and spoke about taking back their country that was being turned into an unrecognizable dictatorship. Here's Democrat Strom Thurmond speaking back then like a member of the Republican faction we would call the Tea Party today.
It simply means that it's another effort on the part of this president to dominate their country by force and to put into effect these uncouth and these damnable proposals he has recommended under the guise of so-called civil rights. And I tell you, the American people from one side or the other had better wake up and oppose such a program, and if they don't, the next thing would be a totalitarian state in these United States.
But this language you're about to hear, you won't hear from the Tea Party today, even though it was legal, permissible, newsworthy, and part of the so-called racial debate back in the nineteen fifties and sixties.
There's not enough troops in the army to force the Southern people to break down segregation and admit the nigger race into our theaters, into our swimming pools, into our homes, and into our churches.
Listen to that. Admit the nigger race into our theaters, swimming pools, into our homes, and into our churches, end quote. My God, that is upsetting to say, and I grew up at a time when people around me said it all the time. This was a US Senator Strom Thurmond who holds a record for filibustering that we may be tempted to notice some kind of Olympic event, continuously talking from eight fifty-four PM on August twenty-eighth nineteen fifty-seven to nine twelve PM August twenty-ninth nineteen fifty-seven, the longest filibuster in history, twenty-four hours, eighteen minutes, but it's no Olympic event. It's a lyric of hatred and endorsement of violence and bigotry that stands as a national shame. There's no recording of it. They didn't record it in the Senate back then. But here's some of what he said. Quote, "I'm convinced that this is bad proposed legislation which never should have been introduced and which never should have been approved by the Senate. I urge every member of this body to consider this bill most carefully. I hope the Senate will see fit to kill it." That word "kill" feels as reckless and brutal and offensive as that N-word spoken without a care in the world in this lyric of hate, a lament for a tradition of segregation, vigilantism, death, and hatred. Disguised as something called states' rights, a principle spoken of quite vigorously today in debates. Governor Strom Thurmond was the party presidential nominee of the Dixiecrats back in nineteen forty-eight. There's a monument to him in Washington and Alabama, places where you can see no monuments or commemoration of the legacy of slavery, Jim Crow, or segregation. Well, maybe there's the White House. It was built by slaves after all, the first lady reminded us recently. We should also note that Strom Thurmond lost to political battle. He holds the record for filibustering on that day in nineteen fifty-seven. Context of white supremacy. Gusty Renegade in for another broadcast, hopefully to share constructive information on the system of white supremacy. Today's date, Thursday, August twenty-seven, two thousand twenty-two. So I have been told this is our seventh study session on Essie Mae Washington Williams. Dear Senator, we're picking up in chapter seven. We are about, hmm, kind of a third of a way into the chapter. Last week, we left off Essie Mae. She had just spoken with Strom Thurmond. He gave her some money. They got a house. She just had her son with Julius. They've been married and everything, and are moving forward in Savannah. In fact, she talked about how many of the black people in Savannah were from the plantation school of thinking, meaning they were complacent and accepting of white supremacy racism as is, seems like she said that of many, 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 many victims as we have been reading her book. Anywho, quickly before we get started, number one, the first audio segment. The Grand American Coon Hunt in Orangeburg, South Carolina. Still rolling strong. Essie Mae Washington talked about, Washington Williams talked about that last week in her memoir, Still Rolling Two Thousand Twenty-Two, Even COVID-nineteen Could Not Shut Down. The Grand Coon Hunt. Next, we heard John Hockenberry on The Takeaway, New York Public Radio. I just think it's interesting to note for this story since Strom Thurmond, Strom Thurmond, child raping white man, John Hockenberry got kicked off of The Takeaway after allegations that he had been sexually inappropriate with females over the years. So he got booted. That segment was before then. Anywho, they talked about so many things, my goodness. They talked about, they started that segment with Walt Whitman. Man, we just had Dr. George Hutchinson on the program two days ago. Suspected race soldier left the program without even saying a mumbling word. Before he left, he admitted we're in a system of white supremacy, and when I was giving his bio details, he is a professor at Ivy League Cornell University, and he studies the Harlem Renaissance and Walt Whitman. Hockenberry started that segment with a poem from Walt Whitman. I just think it's important, no leaving information out anyway around Walt Whitman has a whole lot of calls. Should we be taking his statue down? Should we be reading Leaves of Grass? It seems like Walt Whitman was a race soldier as well. I'm just reading this report from medium.com. Should we cancel Walt Whitman? I'm just skipping out a little bit in the article. Let's see. In November bows, Whitman writes of black Union soldiers, very black in color, large protruding lips, low forehead, et cetera, but I have to say that I do not see one utterly revolting face, end quote. The white troops he finds superb looking. The historian Daniel Aaron notes Whitman telling his mother that after visiting a Negro hospital several times, they were notorious for their squalor. He could not bring himself to go again. There was a limit to one's sinews and endurance and sympathies, end quote. Whitman explains a later, more developed race theory to trouble the negra like the engine will be eliminated. It is a law of races, history, whatnot, always so far inexorable, always to be. Someone proves that a superior grade of rats comes, and then all of the minor rats are cleared out. What a metaphor. Trouble replied, that sounds like Darwin. Whitman replies, does it? It sounds like me too. And we'll leave it there, but he has lots of these types of commentary. Walt Whitman was no friend of the negra. In fact, I had that on my list of questions to ask Dr. Hutchinson. Walt Whitman a racist? Just see what he says. Didn't get a chance. Anyway, with Strom Thurmond and his filibuster that Essie Mae Washington Williams will discuss this week from nineteen fifty-seven, the only thing that I will say, I thought John Hockenberry, I thought it was important, he's no longer on the air because he tried to read that as though he was so outraged and disgusted and sickened by all of that. Race soldiers are wonderful at pretending, but what I thought was important, the date of the filibuster, August twenty-eighth nineteen fifty-seven. That is an important date where it started on August twenty-eighth and went to the twenty-ninth. August twenty-eighth nineteen sixty-three, March on Washington. We haven't got that far yet. Have to see what Essie Mae has to say all that. The reason the March on Washington was slated for August twenty-eighth was because of the lynching and castration of Emmett Louis Till Jr., August twenty-eighth nineteen fifty-five. That filibuster ended on August twenty-ninth. That is the date Hurricane Katrina smacked the Gulf, New Orleans, Mississippi area, enormous number of black casualties, both from the flooding, breach of the levees, and just race soldiers in general, and how they conducted themselves in the area over the next fifteen years or so. But very important dates in this part of the world, the history of racism, white supremacy, August twenty-eighth, August twenty-nine, important dates for white supremacy racism. The last thing, I'll get in just same error while we're reading this book in the first place, again, John Hockenberry, who was accused of sexual misconduct, that's why he is no longer on The Takeaway, the current host is what, Melissa Harris Perry, and that is a cowbell too, but John Hockenberry also omitted. Oh, yeah, Strom Thurmond, all that about stay away from the negras and we're not letting them in our church and swimming pool and all the rest of it. Strom Thurmond raped fifteen-year-old Carrie Butler. I guess it's not that much separation after all. Why they always leave that out? Telling me John Hockenberry didn't know? They don't have Crackerjack staff at The Takeaway in New York Public Radio to get extra information? Oh, maybe we should mention he did father that child with a black female. Get that in too. Maybe that was hidden too close to home for John Hockenberry, maybe. We will get started. Our narrator in South Florida, black female, she's been saying, man, I'm tired of this book, the confusion. Ah, apparently it gets worse this week, so we will be mindful. We will go ahead and get started. Chapter seven, Dear Senator, Essie Mae Washington Williams, Tragic. Context of White Supremacy.
Sometimes the utter complacency of black Savannah would provoke me into action. I was usually very self-effacing. First, I was a woman who wanted to be a lady, and ladies weren't loud, pushy, or that hated word used by whites, uppity. Second, I was black, or at least assigned to that category, so I felt second class and hence not entitled to speak my piece. Third, I was illegitimate and harbored a shame over my birth that stifled me, despite the fact I knew it wasn't my fault. Finally, I had had a big secret to keep, and as the illegitimate daughter of a famous white supremacist, I was under a lifetime gag order. Nevertheless, there were times then that tried my soul. I would take a bus to work at the college. Black people were always required to sit in the back or to stand in the back, even if there were plenty of seats in the white section in the front. Since most whites had cars, there were very few whites on the bus, just a lot of empty white seats. One day coming home from work when I was pregnant with Ronald, I was so tired, I felt like I needed to sit down or I would faint. There wasn't a white person on the bus, but the back was filled with black rush hour standees. I plopped down in the last row of the white section. Seeing this in the rearview mirror, the driver screeched to a halt, sending several standees to the floor. He stormed back to me. Go to your place, lady. This is my place. Whites only. I wanted to tell him my father ran for president on the whites-only ticket. Can't you see I'm pregnant? I went for sympathy. I didn't get it. All I can see is that you're in the white section and you ain't white. Now move. Then give me my money back. I'll get off. No refunds, you. Move. No, I just want my money back. You damn woman. The driver spat and skulked back to his seat. I stayed in mine. The other blacks looked at me as if I were Mahatma Gandhi. I was quite pleased with this little victory. By nineteen fifty-three, Julius had hit a professional wall. Nothing was happening for him in his career, nor in his hopes of affecting change. Julius's sister had married her childhood sweetheart and moved to California. She sent back endless glowing reports of this American Eden that was her new home in Los Angeles. She kept pushing Julius to move west, and one day he decided to do it. Before we left, I felt impelled to say farewell to my Southern roots. I took a long bus ride to Edgefield to visit my relatives in Old Buncombe. Nothing had changed there. It seemed nothing would ever change there. Then I took a shorter bus ride over to Aiken to bid goodbye to my father. Aiken was less than twenty miles away from Edgefield, but it felt like another universe. What it most resembled that I had seen was one of the aristocratic towns along Philadelphia's main line, Bryn Mawr, Paoli, Haverford. There were all gated mansions, manicured lawns, and country club white people riding horses down the city's tree-lined streets. There were black servants everywhere in maids and butlers' uniforms, none of the poor unemployed derelicts who lay around the typical Southern squares. I was one of the only black people not in uniform. This was the kind of place where a black person not in uniform might be stopped by the police, but I didn't see any police. None were needed in a perfect place like this. My father's new law firm, Thurmond, Liebrand, and Simmons, was in a manicured building right across from the post office, but I didn't think about going in. I remembered how my mother and I had just walked into his office in Edgefield, but that was Edgefield, and that was before he was famous. It occurred to me that if my white half had been the lowest common denominator, then I might be living in one of these gated mansions, riding horses, sipping juleps at the country club, instead of skulking around this exclusive paradise, my own birthplace, feeling like an intruder. I had to wonder why in the world my mother was taken here of all places to give birth to me. I suppose it was simply to get out of Edgefield, out of the radar of scandal. Twenty miles in those days was a long way. I imagined that a black midwife delivered me. I was certain that I wasn't born in any hospital. I was born an outsider, and now I was back as one, in this most inside of towns. If I were truly my father's daughter, I could have been one of the Aikenites, an insider, not an interloper, but I wasn't. I found a payphone outside of the post office and called the law firm. A secretary put me through to my father. I had called a week before to plan the visit. I'm here.
I'll pick you up.
I told him I was at the post office. He told me to wait on the street outside. There was nobody there, no witnesses, when his car pulled up. It was a dark Ford, nothing fancy, even in this fancy town. My father was definitely not pretentious. This is some place, I said as we drove around aimlessly. He had never taken me to a restaurant or any public place. I was sure he wasn't going to start now.
Full of Yankees, he said. Southerners don't have this kind of money. Yankees and their horses. There's my bank.
My father proudly pointed out another manicured building, the Aiken Federal Savings and Loan Association. I thought you were a lawyer.
Lawyers make the best bankers, he said. They can read all the fine print.
He told me a little about his life here. He had this law practice which handled everything from murders to divorce, but made most of its money in eminent domain cases. Nearby was a federal nuclear reactor facility known as the Savannah River Plant. The Atomic Energy Commission had to purchase private land. My father's firm went to court to get the owners better prices than the government wanted to pay. That's a perfect job for you, I said.
Why, Essie Mae?
Because you hate the federal government. You get to fight them for a living.
I hadn't thought of it that way.
With all the money he was making from this practice, my father had set up the bank. We rode by his new house, which seemed like a cottage compared to the neighboring palaces. As I said, he wasn't pretentious. I asked him if he had any plans for a family. This time, he answered the question.
I'd love one, he said, but my wife had some health problems.
Deep inside, I was a little hurt, even though I had brought up the subject. Here was his family after all, right in the seat next to him. He asked a few perfunctory questions about my children, but nothing more. His grandchildren, if he had wanted them, were just three hours away. I hated not existing. The subject changed to politics. Ever fearful of communism, my father had committed the heresy of supporting his wartime commander, General Eisenhower, a Republican, against the Democrat Adlai Stevenson in the nineteen fifty-two election. Although he had bet on the winner for a white hero like himself to vote for the party of Lincoln, the Negro Party, as the GOP was known in the South, was an act of political suicide in South Carolina.
I'm not in politics anymore, Essie Mae. You have to vote your conscience.
He drove me to the bus station and said goodbye. He told me he thought I would enjoy California.
It's wide open out there, he said.
I wasn't sure whether he meant the spaces or the segregation situation. I didn't press it. He repeatedly urged me to finish college and handed me an envelope to that end. He hugged me and kissed my cheek and said how much he'd miss me. I waited for the Edgefield bus, then dutifully trudged to the back of the coach. The envelope was packed with more of those Benjamin Franklin notes. I doubted anyone who ever rode this bus carried this sort of money. California, I suppose, must have warranted this display of affection. All the money in the world couldn't have bought Julius and our two sons decent accommodations on our trip across the country. We drove across the green and lush deep south and then Texas, which for all its barren plains was just like the deep south as far as blacks were concerned. There were motels all along the highways, but blacks were barred for most of them, nor could we use restrooms at many of the gas stations for fear of being victimized by Klan types. There was an informal network of black travelers who had told Julius what rest stops and service areas were safe for us, which often meant a nail-biting long ride in which we often came close to running out of gas before we arrived at safe harbor. Throughout the trip, we sometimes had to improvise, sleeping in the car, that sort of thing. It was tough with the two young boys, but they were good and didn't complain, which may have been a genetic trait they inherited from my long-suffering side of the family. In big cities like New Orleans and Dallas, there were colored-only motor courts where we could catch up on sleep and bathing, but it was more the Mary and Joseph experience of no room at the inn until we reached New Mexico. There were very few blacks there, and people seemed happy to receive us, to take our money. There were lots of Mexicans, and maybe they thought Julius was one of them. There were lots of Mexicans, and maybe they thought Julius was one of them. It was smooth sailing all the way across that endless southwestern desert to Los Angeles. The whole trip lasted about a week, but the trials and tribulations of being black voyagers in a white world made it seem like a month. Our first impression of Los Angeles was the surfer shacks along the then-deserted Pacific Highway. In Malibu. The ocean was beautiful and blue, and those shacks represented the freedom of the endless summer that was LA. Eventually, those shacks became the beachfront palazos of Santa Monica, where the stars lived then. Hooray for Hollywood, I sang to myself. We had finally made it. The City of Angels immediately lived up to all the stories Julius's sister had regaled us with. I had never been in a place that wasn't a humid steam bath, so the eternal spring weather was a miracle. There were huge mountains, which I had also never seen, right up to the Pacific Ocean. The orange groves, the palm trees, the night-blooming jasmine. It was a little like the south, but minus the muggy heat, much neater and more spacious. And above all, the biggest difference was that the blacks were living like white people. There were no old buncombs, no shanty towns, no slave cabins, just sprawled ranch houses like you saw in the television shows that were made out here. Or Spanish colonial stucco houses, or craftsmen-style wooden bungalows with swimming pools and palm trees and ocean vistas and nice cars. Julius's sister and her husband, whom we stayed with, lived near Hollywood. They had friendly white neighbors, friendly Japanese neighbors, and friendly Mexican neighbors. Everyone seemed to get along. We'd eat at drive-ins with waitresses on rollerskates, at taco stands, at coffee shops, at Creole restaurants when we'd get homesick for fried chicken. The clientele at these establishments was generally mixed. We were, there were no colored balconies. We'd go to the movies and see From Here to Eternity or Magamba and sit where we wanted, excited by the fact that we might spot the stars of these films in real life when we walked outside. Of course, most blacks weren't rich, and most whites did have more money than we did. But out west, we felt we had a chance, a more equal opportunity to do well than we had back east. There was none of the pressure you felt in New York, none of that eastern rat race, none of that southern hatred. There were vast spaces, endless vistas, zero claustrophobia, enough for everyone without having to fight someone else for short supplies. Los Angeles went on forever, and we were thrilled to be here. It was indeed wide open. I finally understood what my father meant. As I got to know Los Angeles better, I saw that there were indeed all-black neighborhoods. But there were no slums, no urban blight like in the East. Blacks, poor blacks, may have been living in tiny wooden houses and wats, but they had the same cool air, the same bright sun, the same palms, the same Pacific. If you were going to be poor, it was a lot easier being poor out here than it was in Harlem. The southern blacks had called their immigration to the north-northeast their exodus to the promised land. Los Angeles held far greater promises in my eyes. I was thrilled that when I gave birth to our daughter Wanda, that first year in Los Angeles, that she would grow up a California girl. Julius quickly found a job in the suburb of Downey at North American Aircraft. The aviation industry was one of the biggest businesses out here, and it hired lots of people, blacks and whites. Julius worked as a drill press operator. It seemed like a terrible come-down for a lawyer, but he saw it as only a stop-gap position until he could take the California bar and qualify as an attorney in the Golden State. The bar course was very expensive, so he was working to save up for it. Meanwhile, the money at North American was very seductive. Julius quickly rose to become a shop steward and kept making more and more. It wasn't a fortune, but it kept him from wanting to take any time off to study for the bar. Because the segregation factor and other inequities of the South weren't at all obvious in Los Angeles, Julius may not have felt as pressing a need to save the world as he had back in Dixie. Whatever, he postponed resuming the legal career that had thus far held only promises for him, but no tangible results. He also gradually began drinking and became increasingly depressed. There was trouble in paradise, though it took several years to become apparent. I would call my father at his law office every few months just to say hello. He would send me money by cable that I would go down to get at Western Union. His bank must have been doing well because he would send a thousand here, a thousand there. It was very generous of him. I opened my own bank account and put it away for our children's future. I wanted to give it to Julius, but he was still so idealistic that I was sure he would refuse the money of the racist Strom Thurmond. Even if it meant his getting off the assembly line and back to his dream. That money would have felt tainted to him. Nineteen fifty-four was an amazing year, both for America and for my father. In May of that year, the Supreme Court handed down its decision in Brown versus Board of Education, declaring that segregated public schools were unconstitutional under the Fourteenth Amendment. Separate but equal was over, at least according to the law. I was glad to be out of the South when that ruling came down. The news made it clear that the entire region was up in arms and was planning to fight back and not honor the court's decision. In California, as in Pennsylvania, the schools were mixed. The problem was not ours. In the midst of South Carolina's anti-Brown mobilization, which was known as massive resistance, as opposed to Gandhi's passive resistance, the senior senator from South Carolina, Burnet Maybank of Charleston, would be running as the shoe-in Democratic candidate for reelection that fall. He dropped dead of a heart attack at his summer home in the North Carolina Mountains near where Julius and I had gotten married. The state Democratic Party, right after the funeral, decided to nominate one of their own, Edgar Brown, Soul Blatt's co-head of the infamous Barnwell Ring to make Maybank's spot on the ballot. The party fiat seemed to shake Strom Thurmond out of his cushy Aiken hibernation. Mentioning the Barnwell Ring to my father was the same as showing a red cape to a bull. It represented all that was undemocratic about the Democratic Party in his state. So he came out and denounced the actions of this old boys' club and announced that he would offer himself as a write-in protest candidate on the November ballot. No one took my father very seriously this time. No write-in candidate had ever won a major election. The entire Democratic apparatus came out for Brown. Senator Olin Johnston, the man who had beaten Strom Thurmond and sent him packing to Aiken, endorsed Brown, as did former President Harry Truman, still the party's grand old man and still the man who vanquished then-humiliated Strom Thurmond. But this time, my father got the last laugh, pulling off an upset even bigger than Truman's had been. Campaigning as a grassroots outsider, a man of the people, Strom Thurmond came out of his political grave and trounced the Barnwell Ringleader, getting nearly twice the votes as Edgar Brown. My father, the senator, was now going to Washington to take on big government to walk in the giant steps of his idol, South Carolina's greatest senator, John C. Calhoun. When I reached him in Aiken to congratulate him, he was the happiest I had ever heard him. He was so happy that he insisted, you come see me in Washington, you hear? I wasn't sure I heard him correctly. Maybe he forgot who I was. Maybe he confused me with some white well-wisher. Maybe he said that to everyone without meaning it, a politician's empty greeting. For some reason, however, I took it seriously. In the back of my head, I began making plans to visit my father in his new office on Capitol Hill. How could anyone who was the daughter of a senator not want to do the same thing? I took these plans more seriously when a month or so after the election I got a Christmas gift wire of one thousand dollars. It was my father's equivalent of a victory cigar. I decided it was high time. I told Julius that he should get off his high horse and let me help him get back into the law. We were safe in California. There was no Klan to harm us. The fear of race fanatics was not present. Few people in California even knew who Strom Thurmond was, other than a right-wing southern politician. Interracial marriages, while not a huge trend at this point, were definitely not unheard of out here. In the South, biracial children were forced to live as blacks and as second-class citizens. Here, they weren't forced to do anything but follow the American dream. My father had just beaten a real ring, and the racists behind it, who were far worse than my father. Everything was relative, certainly in the South. My father was going to the Senate, where he could do the whole nation some good. I wanted to go see him, and I wanted to take Julius with me. We had moved to our own small house by then, a rental on Hobart Street between Hollywood and downtown. We had a TV, a dishwasher, a view of the Hollywood sign and the distant hills, and three beautiful children. Plus, my father was a senator. Was this not the American dream come true? Julius didn't think so. When I suggested to him that he and I go to Washington and open a dialogue with my father, he refused flat out.
Waste of time, he said. Just because he's going to the Senate doesn't mean he's got religion. He'll just use the pulpit as a place, as a pulpit of hate.
Not if he gets to know real black people, people like us. It'll make him see the light. My pleadings for a bridge to understanding fell on deaf ears. Julius thought my idealism was unrealistic. You know, if it wasn't for him, we wouldn't have met, I commented. Julius began laughing. He thought that one was funny.
Now you're giving him credit for fate? Come on.
Julius stopped laughing when I revealed to him that my father had been sending me money that I had saved and wanted to use for him to quit North American Aircraft and get back to the law, however long it might take to pass the bar and start a practice. He seemed insulted, just as I had feared.
I won't take his money. Neither should you.
Julius bristled, and an argument, one of our rare ones, began to explode. He's my father. Don't you think he owes me something?
Don't fool yourself. He's not your father.
Yes, he is.
Not where it matters. Don't dignify that man by calling him your father.
But that's what he is. I can't help it. He's my father.
Then let him say it, Julius challenged me. Let him testify. See what I say.
He can't, I sputtered. It's the South.
Those are his excuses, not yours, woman. Let him say it.
He won't. He can't, I said.
Then you say it.
I'm saying it. I'm saying it now.
To whom?
Julius asked. Like the lawyer he was, the lawyer he wanted to be, he was taking his years of rage, of frustration, out on me. I'm saying it to you.
Say it to the world, Julius ordered me. Say it loud. That would set the cat among the pigeons. That would change the world.
Are you crazy, Julius? I asked my husband.
Do you realize how much good you could do if you let this out?
He pressed me, grabbing my arm for emphasis. That hurts.
You're covering for that man, aren't you? You're taking his bribes. It's not money to help you or us or anybody but him. It's hush money, Essie. Don't be stupid.
I'm not betraying my father, Julius. Don't ever ask me to, and don't get any ideas yourself. He didn't reply for a long time. Then he said, what do you call what he's doing to you? I call it the best he can do under the circumstances. He's a southerner, Julius.
So am I.
My husband said with a pained look and walked outside to be alone. I didn't dare bring up Strom Thurmond for over a year. The fight didn't really change our marriage, for we truly loved and respected each other. But it did change Julius. His drinking gradually escalated, and I sensed a mounting frustration in him, which I didn't dare address for the sake of avoiding discord. Blessed are the peacemakers, I rationalized to myself, though I remained filled with doubt, especially after seeing my father in action in his new position. As my father took his place in the Senate during the next few years, there were many occasions when I was deeply embarrassed for him and for myself. Maybe Julius was right about him. Maybe as a daughter I was too forgiving. Maybe I had filial blinders that prevented me from seeing the out-and-out racist at whom Julius was glaring daggers. A case in point was my father's role in the creation of what became known as the Southern Manifesto. If the nineteen fifty-four Brown decision was a slap in the South's face, the nineteen fifty-five Montgomery, Alabama bus boycott was a stab in its back. The first mass protest was led by the young Reverend Martin Luther King Junior from Atlanta, a graduate of the Crozer Theological Institution of Westchester, near Coatesville. The Montgomery movement stirred my heart. I had been one of those back-of-the-bus riders who hated it. And now Rosa Parks and other abused blacks had finally had enough and said so, bringing Montgomery to its knees. I guess southern whites had had enough of this uppiness and looked to my father as the voice in the Senate to stop the liberal madness. In nineteen fifty-six, the documents signed by nineteen of the twenty-two southern senators, Lyndon Johnson of Texas did not, nor did Albert Gore of the Estes Kefifor of Tennessee, and the vast majority of southerners in the House, basically declared war on the Brown decision as an abuse of judicial power and called for a return to the separate but equal status quo, anti-Brown. It stated that the states had the right, by any lawful means, to resist integration ordered by the federal government. My father, in touting his manifesto, once again put his racist foot in his states' rights mouth, calling the white people of the South the greatest minority in this nation. He also bemoaned the outside agitators, the South's favorite euphemism for communist sympathizers, were out to destroy the harmony which has existed for generations between the white and negro races. Oh daddy, I despaired. Nineteen fifty-six was also the year our fourth child, Monica, was born. While Julius's North American earnings and the liberal credit available to aircraft workers, we were able to buy our own residence in the suburb of Compton in a new tract house development called the Joy Homes. Like us, there were many first-time black homeowners, and it felt very empowering to own our little piece of the rock that was California. That summer, while Julius worked, he never would take a vacation, especially with the new mortgage at hand. I took all four children to Coatesville to see Mary and the rest of the family. That was when I decided to call my father on his invitation. The Southern Manifesto might have chilled my interest in seeing him if it had been my first exposure to his racist bombast. But it wasn't, and I knew that he'd say it was just politics and that the Negro had no better friend than he, and that included Reverend King. To my surprise, when I called the Senate and reached his office, my father got right on the line. I told him I was in I told him I was in Coatesville and wanted to say hello. And before I could say it to myself, he repeated his invitation. Come see me in this big office, Essie Mae, and bring your children. I thought four kids might be too much for me and for him. So I decided to take a day trip to Washington on the train, which took only a couple of hours each way, and show Strom Thurmond his oldest grandson, Julius, now seven. We got off at Union Station and took a cab to Capitol Hill. Because we were early, I asked the driver, who was black, to drive us around to see the Lincoln Memorial and Washington Monument. Washington was a beautiful city and I had only caught glimpses of it from the train on my journeys to the South. Now I got to see it up close. And its white marble majesty, really, forgive the cliche, made me proud to be an American. So did my father. His whole staff at the old Senate Office Building knew I was coming in, though I assumed they thought I was an old family friend from Edgefield. They gave me a royal welcome, oohing and aahing over little Julius, who was getting taller and handsomer every day. Whether they noticed any resemblance to their boss, I'll never know. Nor did the boss himself make any such comment, though his face certainly lit up when he saw him. He took Julius into his arms and embraced him, lifting his grandson over his head to show off for him how strong he was. Now I knew that as a politician, Strom Thurmond had a lifetime of experience kissing babies, but not black babies and not his own grandchildren. Julius wasn't really a baby, but the love Strom Thurmond showed for him was totally genuine and the man was deeply moved. I wished that I had had the chance to show him my other children when they were young. That might have humanized our stiff relationship. The Senate Office was very grand, filled floor to ceiling with law books and history books. The first thing I noticed were the American and Confederate flags hanging behind his desk. You could take the boy out of Dixie, but you couldn't take Dixie out of the boy. But he was so loving to my son that I couldn't get disgusted with it. There were lots of framed awards, degrees, magazine covers, including Time, and countless framed photos of every member of his family, with numerous shots of his father and of his wife Jean. I wished mine and my children's could have had a place of honor as well. That would have been nice, but it wasn't realistic, not then, not for the man I came to think of as president of the South. I noticed a set of barbells behind his desk. Every morning, I exercise an hour at home, he said. Then I come here and lift these after I walk up the stairs to work. I always walk to the Senate Chamber, never take the train. I don't believe in elevators. He stood up, did some high kicks, knee bends and stretches. He reminded me of a Rockette at Radio City in New York. Just because you're in an office doesn't mean you can't exercise. Then he opened a large dresser, which turned out to be a medicine cabinet stocked with row after row of vitamins and mineral supplements, wheat germ and many bottles of mineral water. Water up here isn't pure like South Carolinas. Have to drink this. He opened a bottle called Poland Springs. Roosevelt's favorite, he noted. Do you think I look fifty-six, Essie Mae? Tell me the truth. No way, sir, I said with a laugh. He was doing something right. He could have passed for someone twenty years younger. In the nineteen fifties, before the swinging sixties and the rise of youth culture, a man of fifty-six would have been considered an elder statesman. My father may have worked at the statesman part, but the elder was anathema to him. He told me how he rode bicycles every weekend in Rock Creek Park and was introducing legislation to build bicycle paths all over the country. Exercise and diet. That and eight hours of sleep every night. That's the key to longevity, he asserted as he had before. Of course, if you eat well, you'll sleep well. You are what you eat. He then gave me his inevitable nutrition lecture. Today, he was on a protein kick, decades ahead of Dr. Atkins. Try to avoid bread, Essie Mae. You'll lose weight if you stick to meat and vegetables. And no potatoes, french fried, even baked potatoes. He always managed to make me feel fat. I didn't take it as a warning, but as a critique. I hadn't lost the weight from having Monica and I knew it. But she's worth it, I told him. I'm sure she is, if she's anything like her big brother here. The senator playfully pinched Julius's cheeks. Your children deserve the best. At that, he gave me another envelope and a big hug and kiss and had his driver take us back to Union Station and see us onto the train. He had given us several thousand dollars this time. Whatever he stood for, however he segregated me from his real life, I couldn't help but like having a senator for a father.
That is the end of chapter seven. We'll pick up with chapter eight, uh, once we finish up with our commentary. Much obliged for folks, uh, being patient. Context of white supremacy. The number is seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred. The code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. And just full context, because I do take pride in not having audio botched, like I think we've done the audio. What, for, we've had a book club for over ten years. I can count on one hand the number of times where there's been a problem with the audio that botched it. One of other sons is one. Chris Kyle is one, like, that is not a common thing to have audio problems. Gus did have computer problems this week. Thought I was gonna be setting my computer off for repairs. Anywho, thank you for being patient. Archives should be pristine. That said, before we get to the folks who dialed in, star six one if you have commentary untiljustice@gmail.com if you would like to, uh, email your commentary in. I could have, that could have been disastrous because I had to stop doing my highlights when she gave the mention. Make sure I don't lose my highlight here. Oh, took my highlight out of the thing. I'll refine it. I had to stop. She mentioned Savannah, the Savannah River Plant Nuclear Facility in South Carolina I hadn't heard of. And I had to stop. Let's see if I can find it really quick. If it takes any time, then I'll get to the callers first and then read. They have a whole section. This is a lengthy article that they have at the Post and Courier. And I mean, super lengthy. Probably takes, I think they have the time. It takes probably about thirty minutes, twenty, thirty minutes to read the entire report. Uh, but one of the big chunks, uh, in the report or subsections, I guess if you wanna call it, radiation, racism, and reform. Now, this is way over like seventy percent of the article by the time you get to this portion. They talked about people who died at the facility, racism that they practiced at the facility and all this. Didn't have safe practices and all this. All this is about World War Two when they put this nuclear facility together in South Carolina. So the section with racism specifically, let's see. Do, 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 do. I'm even, I'm not even giving you all of the racism section. I'm skipping over a good chunk of this. Hmm, so the black male that they're talking to here is Willar, W I L L A R. Willar Hightower, black male who worked at the plant. Okay, so he says, Mr. Hightower, "Most black workers at the bomb plant labored in blue collar jobs, some involving exposure to radioactive and other hazardous wastes. Few black employees held professional, professional positions when Hightower was recruited out of the Army, where he served as lieutenant. As a college educated mathematician and engineer, Hightower had the skills the plant needed. He began in a relatively isolated laboratory where he worked mainly with similarly trained whites. On occasion, he found racist symbols near his workstation, such as a hangman's noose. He also found racist words scribbled in places. But for Hightower, now an Aiken County Councilman, the worst discrimination came in the form of bias in promotions. It seemed like you couldn't move up in a job. Many of us hit a glass ceiling, whatever that means. He and many other black workers ultimately filed a discrimination suit and received individual settlements. Documents filed in that suit provided Hightower with his first thorough accounts of how racism played out for some blue collar black workers. One case involved a black worker sent into a high radiation area without proper protection. He also read accounts of black employees who were reportedly forced to take off their personal radiation monitors when they were sent into radioactive situations so it would not show up on official records. Studies would later show that blacks experienced higher incidents than whites of some cancers and early deaths. Plant officials continued to dismiss concerns despite growing evidence of sickness and death from radiation and other hazardous materials. They insisted the plant was safe." Again, this is a massive article all about death and radiation and white people lying and racism. And the title of the article, Deadly Legacy, Savannah River Site Near Aiken, One of the Most Contaminated Places on Earth. Racist man. Matter of fact, let me give you one more. Let me give you one more. This is at the very end. Anderson recalls an incident, this is the last portion of the article. Recalls an incident in two thousand when a man in her office building went to get some food at the canteen. A radiation monitor alerted on one of his shoes when he tried to enter the food area. Safety officials retraced his steps and discovered a roach he had kicked aside in a hallway. The roach was hot from cesium two four four, a radioactive isotope formerly used in a highly contaminated area of a secured lab. Plant officials cautioned workers to avoid encounters with roaches and told them to alert the radiation control division if they saw one. Officials characterized the incident as an isolated case involving a roach that managed to creep out of the radioactive lab through some tiny crevice. The plant also studied ways to beep beef up pest control. Anderson believes the roach offers a sign that the entire bomb plant is radioactive and no place there is safe. Just how many casualties arose from the radiation exposure at the bomb plant and the nation's other similarly, similar facilities may never be known. What is certain is that Anderson, Josephine Hightower and thousands of sick, dying and dead workers, many black, from the Savannah Bomb Plant and the nation's other nuclear weapons facilities manned the front lines in America's fight to win the Cold War and they are among its only casualties. South Carolina. Environmental racism. We read, uh, Harry Day Washington, A Terrible Thing to Waste. Lots more details. I was just stunned. I'd never even heard of this plant till we started reading this here book. With that, the number again, seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred. The code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. Uh, now let's see. We had, uh, some sort of issue or what have you with the switchboard, uh, during the program this past weekend. Uh, so hopefully we will not have, uh, repeat issues with the switchboard, uh, not working or being goofy or whatever the case is. Uh, I'll double check. If folks don't have any comments on the first section, that's fine, but I will double check because I thought that was the case this past weekend for the compensatory call in. Turns out it was not. There were a number of people who emailed in and said that they had their hand up, commentary to share. For some reason, the switchboard was not working. Man, what a difficult time. Uh, let's see. Uh, retired firefighter in Florida, uh, see his hand, should be with us. I'll look for other folks, uh, if they have commentary as well, then I'll read, uh, folks who wrote in also. Retired firefighter in Florida. Jeff, commentary for the first portion? Might just be listening. Let's see. Retired firefighter, you with us or just listening?
Oh, I, I was, I was muted. I muted myself. Uh, help me get started. Uh, greetings, everyone. Help me get started. Um, the, the motivation for them to move was for what? I, I, I forgot that part of the reading.
Uh, well, her husband, uh, Julius had been having a difficult time getting work. He's a trained lawyer and has passed the bar and everything, but the black people where they live at in Savannah, they don't have a lot of money, so they can't really afford to hire an attorney. And so he's, uh, kinda stuck working, you know, lame jobs and not really able to advance his career. They have a family now. She's dropped out of school. Uh, and so he has, uh, family. I believe she said it was his, her sister-in-law, his sister, who says, hey, come to California. It's great. It's better. You don't have all that racism. You can do your law practice. It's great, it's great, it's great. So they take her up on it. That's who they stay with them when they eventually move out to, uh, LA is her husband's sister.
Right. That, that reasoning, that reasoning with the husband of not fully pursuing a career as a lawyer. I heard that from somewhere else. I don't, I don't know if it was a part of the, the negative justification that a white person mentioned to a young Malcolm Little. It, it was somewhere, it was somewhere. I just can't remember exactly. What, in other words, based on what you just said, is that, okay, well, even if you do become a lawyer, black people won't be able to afford you and you're not gonna get any white people to, uh, hire you either. That sort of, I've heard that, I've heard that for, uh, you know, with, with some, with others, is what I'm saying. Uh, but anyway, uh, uh, in, uh, California, uh, I was just thinking, uh, she made it seem like, uh, there wasn't, uh, any racism in, uh, in, in California. Uh, I, I'm, I'm assuming it was, it was, uh, Southern California. Am I correct?
Los Angeles.
Oh, man. The, 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 the quote unquote law enforcement at that time, I think was headed by the, the, uh, uh, race soldier that was recruiting, that was recruiting, uh, white males from the South to, uh, work at, uh, LAPD. Uh, I just can't think of his name. I would know it if you said it. Uh, legendary racist, uh, he was, uh, uh, the head of LAPD. Uh, I'm pretty sure he was functioning during that time. I'm pretty sure he was, uh, was functioning during that time as the police chief of, of, uh, LAPD. Uh, with her confusion, she was very unrealistic with a lot of things that I was listening to in the first half. Uh, which, you know, that's part, that's part of the victim status. That's part of the victim status. Uh, she didn't ask to come into this world. And, uh, and there it is, not only, not only under a global system of racial white supremacy. Her bi, uh, biology is mixed with a devout racist on top of it. You know, so that makes it even more complicated. The husband, I think, was pretty much, pretty much, uh, knowledgeable about what was going on with the, 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 the race father, the racist father, uh, and was actually giving her some accurate, uh, 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 understandings, you know, in it. Uh, I just cringe at, cringe at the idea that these things were not talked about, were not talked about, uh, you know, uh, before they, uh, even got serious with one another. Uh, but he, and I guess hung in there and whatnot, that sort of thing. It probably, he probably wouldn't have, they probably wouldn't have gotten married, I guess, uh, had she did, uh, reveal all those things. But I would say that's a lesson that, you know, that, uh, I learned from Mr. Fuller that everybody, uh, that's a victim of racial white supremacy should, should do uh, when it comes to, uh, coupling male, female, uh, coupling and that sort of thing. Uh, whatever. What else? What else? Yeah, that's basically all I can think of. He was, the husband was quite accurate, especially with the tactics of the father in regards to, to her. I forgot the term that he used about giving this money, giving this money to her, that sort of thing. You know, he's a, he's a very skilled professional politician and that, and that's what they do. You know, they, and that's how, that's how they're able to get people to vote for them, you know, even white people. You know, so he's very well practiced, very well, very well astute at that. And far as his, far as his health and eating is concerned, Adolf Hitler was a vegetarian. So, you know, that's basically, that's basically all I have to say about that, you know, as far as that concern, you know, because I, I'd noticed in the book, it keeps repeating that over and over and over again, you know, but Adolf Hitler was a vegetarian. He was very healthy in how he ate and complained about others not eating well from my, from my readings and, and listenings to so many, he's probably the most popular person in the world has ever known, at least in the last hundred years. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Much obliged, retired firefighter in Florida. I have heard that frequently as well about Adolf Hitler. Maybe both of us have been misinformed, but that he was vegan, plant-based diet, all, you know, being real particular about what you eat. Number one, hey, trying to have as many years as possible to practice white supremacy racism. Like, hey, who wants to, you know, eat Cheetos, drink Kool-Aid every day so you can die? From heart to say, what we heard last week, Carrie Butler died at thirty-eight. No, 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 no. I need to be around until I'm a hundred. Strom Thurmond at least, I need to be around a long time so I get to practice racism, white supremacy for decades, a whole century of white terrorism all over the world. So of course, yeah, I'm gonna eat as healthy as Pope at that fried chicken down, drink that water. Leave that to the niggers, in fact, so they can eat all that terrible stuff. Let's see.
And from my understanding, he didn't, he didn't smoke, he didn't drink.
Yep. Now, that reminded me, all that food talk, the second worst book ever, Dr. Layla Africa Nutricide. If folks, you read the book over with us when he did all that talk that I said was totally ridiculous, one of the reasons out of many why that book formerly the worst book ever, now Alisibo is lucky, but he's saying that if white people don't know how to eat, and I said, whoa, 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 that has got to be, talk about old bunkum, that's got to be some nonsense totally because if that was true, they would be the ones dying at thirty-eight, gout, kidney failure. That's not what he said in this book. In fact, Strom Thurmond is giving out better information than old Dr. Layla Africa and way earlier. He's talking about drinking water and put that down and get those vegetables and that, and live to a hundred one. The words and the actions match up. I'm here kicking it, calling folks nigger up, almost live to a hundred one. You sit around and eat fried chicken and talk about you're gonna do justice. Did you have anything else, retired firefighter?
That's, I was, I was kind of like talking out of turn, but, but basically, white people, based on what you're saying, which I think is accurate, white people are serious. You know, that, you know, it's, so, in other words, they, they, they have the ambition to live as long as they possibly can, especially to a lot of people who, white people who are, who are obviously are racist. They, they are, they are very much interested in living as long as they can. They're healthy, very healthy. They do healthy things as far as from a physical standpoint, I'm talking about, with the advent in mind of, of practicing racist white supremacy as long as they can. A lot of white people are like that. That's all. Thank you.
Much obliged, retired firefighter in Florida. As Mr. Fuller would say, hey, why, before we even get to eat all the broccoli you can and eat all the kale you can and put that sugar down and all that and get more, why? Why do we need to be here a hundred years if you're not gonna do justice? Be here to rape children? But we don't need a hundred years there. We don't need five minutes of that. Be here to rape fifteen-year-olds, practice racism, keep black people from going to school the one at that. We do not need to hang out on the planet for that. And white individuals classified as white do a whole lot of that. Hang out for incorrect purposes. Can't hang out and do what? The Savannah River Site. That's what we gonna do. Plan nuclear devastation for the planet. Some of the folks who wrote in, let's see, we're talking about healthy food. Carrie Butler died at thirty-eight last week. And I said, man, all that bad food and stuff, I think that's part of the kidney failure. We do have folks who have some medical expertise, Vegan RD, Cows Investor, she wrote in, she said, greetings Gus, poor eating can be related to kidney failure. Risk factors for kidney failure are high blood pressure or diabetes. If these diseases are poorly controlled, the tiny blood vessels in your eyes and brain can get damaged by both diseases too. Enjoying the book club read, Essie Mae definitely was highly victimized by her father. Absolutely. Much obliged, Vegan RD. I'll read one more around here. Different investor wrote in, greetings Gus, the narrator, except when Gus messes up the audio. The narrator during the reading is excellent. I concur. Regarding the coon hunt, you may have already picked up on this. I think the dog named Gin in Juice, mentioned in the most recent hunt, is a reference to Snoop Dogg's classic rap tune. I think that that's correct too, sir. Racist joke maybe, of course. He continues, Chapter Seven, Thurmond's Law Practice, Imminent Domain Cases. Get the owners better prices than the government wanted to pay. Since this sounds like a primarily white area, this may demonstrate how imminent domain was practiced differently than when used against black people. Hmm, I was thinking the same thing about that. The imminent domain is normally when they're trying to put a freeway if they boot the niggers out. Number two, Julius postponed the legal career, began drinking and depression. Completely understandable, absolutely. Reminded me of John Henry Washington. Remember him? Her so-called black father until like age thirteen, when he leaves, like, I would be depressed and want to get out of there too. You got me taking care of this raping racist child. And I gotta, I'm out of here too, and I'm depressed and all the rest. Number three, Brown Bee Board of Education, South Carolina's Massive Resistance as opposed to Gandhi's Passive Resistance. This was extensively discussed in the book, Mothers of Massive Resistance by Elizabeth Gillespie McCray, who was interviewed on The Cows last year. The text emphasized the pivotal role of white women in this period. Absolutely. Number four, South Carolina's Great Senator. I have heard some black people in South Carolina refer to him as John C. Killhoon. Love it, love it. Number five, don't fool yourself. He's Julius. He's not your father. I'm not sure if Essie is demonstrating the same empathy for Julius as she shows for her father. And he has father in quotes, but I could be wrong. That is interesting. I'm gonna have to, hmm, I'm gonna have to sit on that one for a little bit. Like, where, where for our investor who wrote in on this one, where if you had to pick like a specific point in the book, where would you pick out where you feel like she's being not too, I guess he might be saying right here in terms of this whole discussion where they're talking about her dad and he gave this money and she's trying to get him to go back to law school. Where do you see where she's not being particularly sympathetic with Julius? Other, where I guess if you want to say this point right here, or if there are other spots where she's, you know, kind of minimizing his feelings and all this as a victim of white supremacy. Let's see, number seven, My Father's Role in the Creation of the Southern Manifesto. It was signed by one-fifth of all members of Congress, all from states compromising the former Confederacy. I noted, one of the signers was Senator Sam Irvin Jr., North Carolina, who was celebrated during the nineteen seventies for his participation in the Watergate hearings. I don't recall his segregationist history being noted at the time. So curious how that happens where so many people, we just conveniently can forget all kinds of things about them being invested in white supremacy racism. Number eight, Julius wasn't really a baby. The love Strom Thurmond showed for him was totally genuine and the man was deeply moved. I bet old Strom was thinking, look at my little pickananny. That sounds totally accurate. Remember that was what Essie Mae's, I think it was like her grandmother when they went down to South Carolina, she's first learning about all this? That she said, the pickings and pickanannies. And then we get to chapter eight. Okay, my notes for Chapter Seven, star six one waruntiljustice@gmail.com if you have thoughts. Let's see, when she talks about, man, I thought this was one time where she did not sound confused. She said that, she talks about the complacency of black people in Savannah, where she mentioned that last week, and she said that she had a tough time being a female. She wanted to be a lady. She didn't want to be thought of as pushy or uppity. And she said, I was black or at least assigned to that category, so I felt second class and hence not entitled to speak my piece. I thought that was so, you have black people 2022 who do not think of racial classification in a way, I was assigned to the black race. Not that I joined, not that I'm black and proud, I was assigned to the nigger group. Nothing I can do about that. Assigned by whom? Usual suspects. She continues, third, I was illegitimate and harbored a shame over my birth that stifled me despite the fact that I knew it wasn't my fault. Finally, I had a big secret to keep and as the illegitimate daughter of a famous white supremacist, I was under a lifetime gag order. I thought that right there, second and third and fourth points are all some of the most important lines in the book. She's assigned to the black category, even though I have a powerful white father, you're a nigger. I was illegitimate. I mean, Jesus Christ, that is, black self-respect has been totally annihilated. I was illegitimate and harbored a shame over my birth that stifled me. You do not get over that in life and I mean, that, that impacts everything. If you think my whole existence is illegitimate, there's something shameful about my existence and I have to have a lifetime gag order, meaning I cannot reveal my father is Strom Thurmond. I can't, I can't even bring it up in my marriage. Now you want to talk about being able to deal with truth. I can't even bring it up with my, we got four children together and I can't even talk about my father. Pause, the money aspect, because she said this week she went back to putting a dollar amount on how much she got. She said she gave her a thousand dollars. Now, give me inflation calculator, this would be the equivalent 2022 of someone dropping about ten thousand dollars on you. A gee in like nineteen fifty, nineteen fifty-five, that era circa, for 2022, that would be about ten thousand dollars approximately, give or take a few nickels. So if someone is coming and dropping a thousand, you also have, not only is this a child raping racist white man and all the confusion after, when he's not out, keep the niggers out of our swimming pools and raping our daughters and all this, not running for president on the nigger problem. He drops by and sees me covertly when there's no one around and drops twelve thousand dollars on me. Even pause again, I said last week, she didn't even tell us how much money she gave, he gave her after she gets married and he sees her for the first time. She just said it was a big envelope of hundreds. And I said then, like, whoa, this could have been five, I said that last week, because I said, I went lowball, I said, I think this was at minimum a thousand dollars, but Strom Thurmond, he got a million votes for president, governor, senator. He invested in real estate like he was rolling in it. He could have easily dropped five thousand dollars on her at that time, which I mean, hey, if he gave her five thousand dollars then, that's like somebody dropping like fifty, sixty thousand dollars on you. You are a parent and hurting? Somebody right now, all this madness with Cobalt, white, with COVID, a white man drops fifty thousand dollars, sixty thousand dollars on you? That also, I mean, you just, saddest book I've ever read for so many reasons. She continues, so she's on the bus, she doesn't want to move, she's pregnant. Now that right there, you are what your grandparents ate, you have a child in utero, that's their experience. My mom is already fatigued and tired and probably didn't, not getting the highest quality food, all this stress of racism. I gotta lie, my dad, where my grandfather is on television every, the niggers, we gotta keep them out of my swimming pool, the niggers. And I tried to get on the bus to sit down, and Vili Fuller Jr. said, this time period, bus drivers were like enforcement officers. You go to get on the bus, he said they would have a pistol right on their hip, like, what? You want to give me some lip? What? Whole lots of violent confrontations went down about this right here. Getting on the bus and then they try to leave and all the rest of it, so, whoa. Infant mortality rate, maternal mortality rate, all right there. Let's see, she said the black people on the bus looked at her as if she were Mahatma Gandhi. I just thought that metaphor was, because this is someone Gandhi who does not like black people. Could have picked somebody else. Let's see, she talked about Aiken, she said all the servants were black. We've heard this many, many times, where it seems like the only time the black people are employed, very super opulently wealthy whites. Come niggers, we'll give you a job to clean our house, clean the toilet, take care of our horses and that sort of thing. She said she didn't see any of the poor unemployed derelicts who lay around the typical southern squares, like dang. All these derelicts that she described over and over and over throughout the book were black males. Why have they got to be derelicts? They can't just be unhoused? Isn't that what they call it now? Let's see, she said this was the kind of place, Aiken, where a black person not in uniform might be stopped by the police for real? Walter Scott for real? Let's see, she said, she goes to see Strom Thurmond, imminent domain cases, I said the same thing, like, wow, it's probably not the same way they do it with the niggers. Let's see, again, saddest book I've ever read, these are your grandchildren. He's not courting anybody. If she were white, if she thought that she got a royal reception this time, if she and little Julius were white and/or we were in a system of justice, oh my God. They would have probably had rose petals on the floor for them to walk in. They would have had big diamond crusted, you know, huge portrait of them like pictures and then a painted portrait of the family. I mean, it would have been totally different. He would have doted, he would have had them there when he was sworn in and all that, oh, look at my little grandchild, oh, my daughter, my goodness, apple of my eye and all the Totally niggerized. He could have told them anything, like when they come up there, he could have told his staff, like, oh, these are the niggers that have worked in my family for years, like, we just take care, such great care of them. Oh, yes, they have the best little niggers ever.[1664.33] Like we just take care, such great care of them. Oh yes, they have the best little Negroes ever. He could have told them that. Let's see, um. Talks about he's going to support Eisenhower during their visit. Again, uh, Eisenhower is a German name. We already had our Adolf Hitler, uh, mentioned, the German Americans definitely not treated like the Negroes or the Japanese Americans during World War Two. Uh, let's see. I had a good chuckle, uh, to think that not that long ago, the GOP, the Republican Party was thought of as the Negro Party. Race soldiers can change things quickly sometimes if they really want to. Uh, let's see. I can't, uh, minimize the amount of money. Um, just being someone you grew up, you don't have a lot of money, you're struggling to have a white, or really anybody, particularly a white person. Who is someone who contributed fifty percent of your genetic material, dropping thousands of dollars, probably tens of thousands of dollars on you. That would probably have an enormous impact and you see that right to this day for less money even. Uh, let's see. All of her, I was surprised she didn't just call it the Green Book when they're going through during the traveling. We talked about all this in the warmth of other sons and even Isabel Wilkinson talked about retracing some of these drives. Uh, and how she thought she was going to drive off the road because she was so tired and was dangerous and all the rest of it. Uh, let's see. She talks about having all these friendly white neighbors and I agree, I think retired firefighter was saying that it seemed like she was, uh, a bit Pollyanna in her description of LA. Again, we did read the warmth of other sons and we heard a whole lot of black people saying, dang, they got out to LA and were foil. They had a hard time getting housing, retired firefighter talked about the LA Police Department and their long tradition of hiring racists to come out there. Uh, and work that that was a part of the appeal, like, hey, forget Kentucky or Arkansas, you can come live in South County, uh, South, Southern California and beat up Negroes. What could be better? LAPD. Uh, and I even thought Nat King Cole, Natalie King Cole, the late, she talked about growing up out there. Someone poisoned their dog and burned Nigger into the lawn of Nat King Cole. And I think he beat Essie Mae Washington Williams and her husband arriving in Southern California. Uh, Black Panther Party was out there too, wouldn't have been a need for all of that if things were so rosy in SoCal. Uh, she said they got homesick for fried chicken, like Jesus Lord, eat better. Uh, the movies, the movies come up all the time, so they move all the way out to California. And I mean, we're out in Hollywood, we gotta go to the movies now. We go see From Here to Eternity, my gosh, she is killing them with the Neely Fuller Jr. flicks, uh, in this film. That is one he talks about all the time. I've seen that one, that's viewed like a classic World War Two flick. Uh, go check it out if you haven't seen that. We got Key Largo, uh, in here already, like running through Neely Fuller's film list. Um, she said none of this, none of the eastern rat rate, none of that southern hatred. I can only say she is not accurate. There's lots, and I mean, or the, we read the warmth of other sons. Dr. Robert Persian Foster moved to Southern California, a doctor, he did not say, oh my God, it is amazing out here. It's wonderful. There's no racism. There's no southern hatred. That's not what he said at all, not even close. Uh, let's see. I even highlighted, she said that even poor black people in tiny wooden shacks and watts could get the same cool air environmental racism. No, that's not true. I'm sure they got some of the same industrial pollution and environmental racism that I just talked about with the Savannah River site in South Carolina. And the evidence is pretty overwhelming by now, two thousand twenty-two, that no Negroes don't get the same air. Uh, let's see. I'm gonna have to think about that in terms of how much empathy we get for Julius from, from hurricanes, because I mean, man, I'm blackmail. My wife, her father is Strom Thurmond, she's lying to me and concealing all this money for the longest. I can't get a job, I'm a trained attorney, they even just allowed one of the first black attorneys to come through the law school, South Carolina College and South Carolina State and all the rest of it. And I can't get a job, I mean, whoa. She's making excuses for this lame racist, like man, same thing I said about John Henry Washington. Like I could see how that would be really frustrating for like a billion different reasons. Not that I advocate alcoholism, but wow, or consuming a drink or whatever to deal with it, but I mean, wow. Um. Let's see. Because the segregation factor and other inequities of the South weren't at all obvious in LA. And I thought that was different wording. She didn't say they weren't there, she said they weren't obvious. Julius may not have felt as pressing a need to save the world as he had back in Dixie. Uh, let's see. She said Thurmond must have been doing well, he would send a thousand here, a thousand there, it was very generous of him. I opened my own bank account and put it away for our children's future. I wanted to give it to Julius, but it was, but he was still so idealistic that I was sure he would refuse the money of the racist Strom Thurmond. Even if it meant his getting off the assembly line and back to his dream, that money would have felt tainted to him. I said last week, like, man, especially if this is like, I said last week, I don't think she gave, he gave her a thousand dollars. I think it's five thousand dollars, who knows, today's money, that's like fifty thousand dollars. That's a lot of money to be like deceiving someone about. You don't say, she said she was hiding it in jars around the house. Now you open up a bank account, presumably you don't even tell him, like, man. All this lying to yourself, you got to lie to your husband. That's what I expect, system of racism, white supremacy and the product of these tragic arrangements. Uh, let's see, and, and she, she identified this as a lifetime gag. Why would you feel that way? This is hush money, is that, maybe that's how she is seeing this. This is the money that I get to be quiet and not say anything about all this. Saddest book I've ever read. Uh, let's see. She, I played Gil Scott-Heron's South Carolina on this program so many times. That song, the full title is South Carolina, Barnwell. I was like, man, I need to go and do the history of that song, Gil Scott-Heron, who we read in the book club. Uh, to see why he made that song and even put Barnwell in the title. Uh, let's see. She says. Oh, he wants her to come visit in Capitol Hill, uh, where before he didn't get those type of public visits. Uh, let's see. She said, in the South, biracial children were forced to live as blacks and as second-class citizens. Here, they weren't forced to do anything but follow the American dream. Hmm, I don't know if that is true today, two thousand twenty-two. And especially, I mean, depending on what you mean by so-called biracial, but if you mean a black person having a child with a white person. See how often, uh, Blake Griffin, or pick anybody you like, they don't get reminded of the fact that they are a non-white person, a Negro. Matter of fact, uh, Matt Barnes, professional basketball player, he talked about growing up in California and all kinds of Negro. He has a white parent, non-white parent. Next, uh, let's see. This whole exchange, uh, with Julius and Essie Mae, he's just being logical. Why doesn't he claim you? He's your father. That's important. You want to be, everybody wants to be able to go and give their, their dad a hug, their parent a hug, especially if your, your parent is someone prominent, public, powerful person. Oh yeah, that's why I want to stick much, she said that so many times, how she wanted to tell this person or that person, especially when someone was terrorizing her. Hey, my dad is Strom Thurmond, Senator Thurmond, Governor Thurmond. Why didn't he do it publicly? Why didn't he acknowledge you publicly? Or why don't you acknowledge it publicly? Or is it that gag order? Oh. That whole exchange though, I thought was so sad and I mean, she's a victim. What can you say? Doesn't even have her mom anymore, died at thirty-eight. It's all she has really, in terms of so-called family. Then, you know, the family she's made with Julius and her children, but I mean. Let's see, um, next. And then she even is, is painful for her, like, you know, he's going to use this pulpit, he's going to do something well and, you know, we can humanize him and all that. And then she sees, oh, he's just gonna Southern manifesto and man. Man, Julius was, like, it is the saddest book I've read. And I mean, you know, he's right, you've already seen him, we had that tack exchange before where he's, it's just politics, Essie Mae, that's all it is, it's just politics. Get out of here. Oh, worst book ever, well, not worst book, saddest book ever. Um. Let's see, I thought it was wild. We got through, or not wild, but just important that we got through this entire section. We moved all the way through nineteen fifty-six, Emmett Till not mentioned at all. We've had so many lynchings in this book already and that was such a momentous, I mean, Rosa Parks said, hey, my conduct on that bus was directly influenced by the castration and lynching of Emmett Till. Unless I'm misinformed. No Emmett Till mentioned at all. Hmm. Important, important. Uh, let's see, anything else? I totally endorse all this about eating correctly and all the rest of it, but I mean, really, uh. Again, white people are not ignorant about the importance of eating correctly, uh, correct health and all that. Many of them don't practice that and they certainly do not promote that with us Lunchables and all the rest of it, fried chicken. But they know the importance of correct eating. You wouldn't have a system of white supremacy if they were just eating, you know, chicken nuggets every day. Um. Let's see. The vanity, do I look fifty-six, Essie Mae? Come on, come on. Um. Let's see. I'll pause there, I'll see if any of the other folks have comments they want to get in. Before we get to the second audio segment, I will share, this is from Old Strom, the biography on Strom Thurmond. There is a little bit more detail about his filibuster, right? That we heard he's, he's got to speak up on behalf of the South and them coming in to push them around, tell them what to do and all the rest of it. Uh, so let's see, give a little bit of extra detail about the filibuster here. Make sure I don't get too far, okay, okay. So this is from the bio, Old Strom. The Southern Manifesto meant the overwhelming majority of the South's political leadership was urging defiance. Adlai Stevenson counting on support of Southern moderates and seeking renomination as the Democratic presidential candidate. Dispatched Harry Ashmore, accused Southern advisor to Washington. Ashmore, by now executive editor of the Arkansas Gazette in Little Rock, had questioned Thurmond on a radio program there during the Dixiecrat campaign. He recalled trying to get him to talk about something other than segregation and I didn't succeed at all. Ashmore met in Washington with Olin Johnston, who told him, it's no use trying to talk to Strom. He believes that shit and believes is in italics. I'm skipping down, got pictures with him out bathing suit at the beach with his wife, who's twenty-five years younger than him approximately. All this other nonsense, even got some pictures later in life, oh, got later in life, pictures of him with Armstrong Williams and Coretta Scott King. In fact, two times with Armstrong Williams, how about that? Uh, jumping down, continuing, Thurmond had set his course. He would take his nineteen fifty-six, nineteen fifty-six respite in Aiken, then return to Washington to resume his role as a symbol of Southern resistance to change. Although Thurmond would forever deny he had engaged in racism, same thing he told Essie Mae. His rhetoric of states' rights always remained attached to the preservation of segregation. He avoided overt race baiting, but for more than a quarter of a century, beginning with the Dixiecrat campaign. He championed with gusto the cause of white supremacy. Skipping down, Thurmond was given, oh, whoop, 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 here we go, three days later, this is a filibuster. Three days later, Governor Timmerman said citizens should demand that their representatives stand up for what is right. Or step aside and let there be elected men with political courage. Who will? Thurmond sensed a potential opponent in Timmerman. The next afternoon, Wednesday, August twenty-eighth, Thurmond again called on Russell, who declined to call a caucus meeting unless a majority of the South's senators requested it. Russell believed the South had gotten the best deal available, that a bargain had been struck and that you play by the rules, written or unwritten. Thurmond was given a nine PM speaking slot in the belief that even if he droned on past midnight, he would get little attention. Thurmond apparently already had made up his mind to stage a one-man filibuster, taking steam baths for several days to dehydrate his body so it would absorb liquids without his having to leave the Senate chamber for bathroom breaks. And lose his right to continue speaking. Senator Barry Goldwater of Arizona briefly spelled Thurmond at one point, reading a report on military manpower policy. An act that helped develop a strong bond between the two men. Senator Paul Douglas of Illinois, a former Marine and liberal Democrat, who strongly believed in any person's right to a jury trial. Sufficiently admired Thurmond's determination and stamina that after fourteen hours, he brought a full pitcher of orange juice, Thurmond's favorite beverage. Thurmond damned it all during the day, his dehydrated body absorbing the liquid like a sponge. Then had arranged to have a bucket in the cloakroom if the senator needed to relieve himself, keeping one foot inside the Senate chamber. Thurmond needed no relief. Despite Tomage's reputation as a committed segregationist, by nineteen fifty-eight, he had turned the corner on race after Ernest Van Diver won election as governor. And as a segregationist candidate, that year he accepted Tomage's invitation to visit him at his home near Lovejoy, a half hour southwest of Atlanta. Van Diver walked in to find Tomage with a group of Atlanta's top black political leaders. Van Diver abandoned his segregationist stance, but Thurmond had set a course, he continued to follow for another sixteen years. In nineteen sixty-three, as President Kennedy proposed to end discrimination in public accommodations after viewing the police dogs and fire hoses used against civil rights demonstrators in Birmingham, Thurmond called it dictatorship over American business to appease the Negro vote block. When Congress passed the Civil Rights Act in nineteen sixty-four, Thurmond said, this is a tragic day for America. When Negro agitators spurred on by communist enticements to promote racial strife can cause the United States Senate to be steamrolled into passing the worst, most unreasonable and unconstitutional legislation that has ever been considered by Congress. End quote. Thurmond said in nineteen sixty-five that the passage of the Voting Rights Act shows that Martin Luther King Jr. must always have an agitation objective, lest he end up in the street one day without a drum to beat or a headline to make. When the Voting Rights Act came up for renewal in nineteen seventy-four, Thurmond called it unfortunate that Congress ever enacted such unconstitutional piece of legislation. Was Olin Johnston right that Thurmond simply believed it? Was he simply too obtuse to recognize that blacks in the South, one of the same rights under law that white citizens had? Was it all a charade? The same political exploitation of race that made Alabama's George Wallace a champion of segregation until the political calculus changed and it no longer paid off? Or did Thurmond simply have to experience new relationships himself to absorb through osmosis that conditions had changed? Or was it all of the above? The answer to those questions should emerge as the rest of the story is told. Now in this biography, a big chunk of the rest of the story is about Essie Mae Washington Williams and how all of that eventually comes out. So we'll read more as we continue. Uh, any other folks, comments they want to get in? If not, we will resume with the text, we'll pick up, uh, chapter eight. Any comments, folks need to get in, folks satisfied? We will assume folks are satisfied, at least for the time being. Uh, so if you have additional comments or did not get to share, write down your thoughts. We should have ample time to share once the second audio segment concludes. Uh, I'm gonna slink through here, see if I can find where chapter eight begins. Uh, just give me a moment, shouldn't take too long. And then we should push off, hopefully with no further mess-ups from Gus T. Much obliged to our narrator, all the folks participating. Context of White Supremacy, Dear Senator by Essie Mae Washington Williams, audio segment two.
Chapter eight, Days of Rage. In nineteen fifty-nine, we sold our house in Compton and moved back to Coatesville. It seemed that we were the first family in those days to leave California and go in the opposite direction. Disneyland, Hollywood and surfing had captured the American imagination and the whole country was getting infected with California fever. But my Aunt Mary had gotten very ill and I wanted to care for her. Julius, whose own mother was an invalid, could understand. Moreover, at North American Aviation, he had hit a ceiling. He was earning good pay, but it was clear he wasn't going much higher off the line and into the executive suite. Besides, he didn't really want to become a corporate man, he wanted to do good. And corporations in the nineteen fifties weren't the place for that. He still hadn't studied for the California bar, perhaps he feared he wouldn't pass. Somehow, he had a block against doing it. I thought a return to our roots might reanimate his legal dreams. Mary had diabetes and heart disease. She was only sixty, but she was like an old woman from the weight of her illness. Like my mother Carrie, at the end, Mary could hardly breathe. Her wasting way brought back terrible memories. I didn't want to put her in the hospital, so I used all my old nursing training to care for her at home. Because he was not a member of the Pennsylvania bar, Julius took a job as a social worker, but right away, we knew it was temporary. If he was going to be back east, he wanted to be home in Savannah. If he was going to be back east, he wanted to be home in Savannah. The civil rights movement was heating up in the South, and for a conscience-driven, aspiring activist like my husband, that was where the action was. President Eisenhower had been forced to send thousands of army troops to Little Rock to integrate the schools. Martin Luther King was in the news almost every day, planning a protest over segregation. I knew Julius heard the siren call. Mary died about six months after we arrived. With the savings I had hoarded from my father, I was able to buy her house at a very low price from her estate. I would fix it up and rent it as an income property. My father had frequently extolled the virtues of real estate, and now I had a chance to own property. The experience was very solid, but quite strange. It was the first time I had ever felt like a capitalist. Julius stayed for about a year until nineteen sixty-one, when he went to Savannah. Pennsylvania wasn't for him. I stayed on with the kids to work on the house, getting it ready to rent before joining my husband in Savannah. Meanwhile, I took a nursing job at the nearby Veterans Hospital Administration Hospital. I visited my father in his Senate office several times when I was in Coatsville. As much as he had enjoyed little Julius, I never took any of the children again. With Julius at home, there was much more tension over my father, who continued to help financially. With four children and little work, we needed some help, and I appreciated deeply what he did, his politics aside. I didn't want to have a row with Julius, who clearly did not approve of my relationship with my father, so I never mentioned Strom Thurman. Still, it was hard to avoid hearing about him, as he was constantly in the press as the key Southern bulwark against communism and against integration. I did my best to be away from the television when Julius watched the evening news, for fear of seeing my father railing against Reverend King and getting into a big argument that no one could win. In nineteen fifty-seven, my father set a record, which still stands for the longest filibuster in congressional history. For over twenty-four hours, he stood on the Senate floor cataloging what was wrong with President Eisenhower's proposed new civil rights law. The law seemed fine to me, guaranteeing voting, educational, and employment rights for blacks, but my father saw it as a federal assault on his sacred states' rights, a desecration of his beloved John C. Calhoun. Most Americans, like Julius, believed that states' rights was nothing but a euphemistic front for racism and segregation. My father would deny this to his death, insisting that he was acting on principle, the sacred principle of Calhoun, who himself admitted that he saw the blacks as an inferior race that must be protected but not exploited. My father obviously shared Calhoun's paternalism. He never saw it as racism, even though the rest of the country did. The day-long filibuster was regarded as a far more prodigious display of bladder control than statesmanship. Both Houses of Congress passed the civil rights law by large majorities. My father seemed like an anachronism from the old South, a throwback, a laughingstock. Rather than hate him, I pitied him. I pitied him far more when his wife died in early nineteen sixty of a brain tumor. She was only thirty-three, a year older than I was. Now, my father had lost not one, but two of the women he loved, far before their time. Small wonder he lost himself in his work, though it was a shame that work was segregation. I'll never forget reading about a particular speech he gave soon after his wife died. I cut it out and saved it, I think to prevent Julius from reading it. It went, "Just as there are in this country, two main and quite distinct cultures, a northern culture and a southern culture, so there are in this country two different species of genus segregation. Segregation in the South is open, honest, and above-board. Northern segregation is founded on hypocrisy and deceit." He called Southern segregation "human," which was one of the worst uses of that adjective I ever heard. Then there was the nineteen sixty presidential election, Kennedy versus Nixon. At the Democratic Convention, my father had supported Lyndon Johnson over JFK, mainly because the Texas senator was not a Yankee, though in time, my father would come to see Johnson, who would champion black rights, as the worst sort of, sort of turncoat scallywad. At the convention after Johnson lost, my father refused to cast South Carolina's vote for Kennedy to make it unanimous. Just as he had voted for the Republican Eisenhower in nineteen fifty-two, he voted for the Republican Nixon in nineteen sixty. There was historical precedent for this nearly a century before. Just as the old Democratic South had backed the Republican haze to end Reconstruction, Strom Thurman urged the new Democratic South to back the Republican Nixon to end Lyndon Johnson's attempt to revisit Reconstruction. Once Kennedy was elected, my father decided that the new president was soft on communism. This was before the October nineteen sixty-two Cuban Missile Crisis. When Julius left for Savannah, I went down to Washington to see my father. The staff gave me a warm welcome. Apparently, the senator enjoyed receiving his constituents. There was nothing aloof about him. I must have been viewed as just another back-home voter. He was on a rampage against President Kennedy for trying to muzzle certain generals who were perceived as making inflammatory "nuke the commies" type right-wing military speeches that were considered an impediment to Kennedy's diplomatic efforts on the international front. "You can't be too right-wing in the cause of freedom," he said, presaging Barry Goldwater's famous remark that extremism in defense of liberty is no vice. By three years, my father and the Arizona conservative Republican were apparently close friends. "The Russians are putting missiles down in Cuba. We've got to stop them," he warned. Many months before that warning was taken seriously by the administration and the world nearly went to war. "He's soft on crime, too." He railed against JFK. "He's in with the mafia." "He doesn't seem the type," I said, defending the fair-haired Prince of Camelot. I liked JFK, but I didn't dare say it. "His best friend's Frank Sinatra," my father said with a sneer. "Frank Sinatra's a singer, not a mobster." I liked him, too. Now he was off limits as well. "He's their boy," my father said, using a word that had slavery and racist connotations for me. "Anyone who works in Las Vegas works for them. Joe Kennedy, too. He made his lick of fortune in prohibition with the mafia. He has that merchandise mob in Chicago. That's all mafia. That's dirty money, filthy." "Kennedy was a war hero like you," I tried to defend him. "You'd think he'd be on guard against the Russians?" "He's a lightweight. All that boy has is his hair and his lovely wife. She and Jean were the two beauties of the Senate. They were becoming friends." His voice trailed off, and the belligerence drained from it. "I'm sorry to hear about that, Senator. I know it's hard." "Yes, it is, Essie Mae. We know what that is." The "we" made me feel special. It made up for the "boy." Everything was relative with my father. Like his diet, like the Cuban missiles, like the Kennedy underworld connections, history would prove that Strom Thurman wasn't as crazy or fanat- um, fanatical as he might have sounded at the time. By the time I settled back in Savannah in nineteen sixty-two, the civil rights movement was reaching its crescendo, and Julius was at the heart of it, working as a staff attorney in the local office of the NAACP while trying to reignite his private practice with Mr. Mayfield, the one local black lawyer he had been associated with in the early nineteen fifties. The idea that lawyers get rich is a recent one. In Savannah, Julius's clients were so poor that sometimes, they could not pay him at all. But Julius wasn't in it for the money, he truly wanted to do right and do good. One of Julius's cases involved a white man who threw lye in the face of a little black boy, whom the white man caught peering at him through the post of a fence. The little boy was blinded. Julius was able to get the boy a large judgment, but it didn't make up for his loss of sight. Despite the victory, Julius was depressed. I did all Julius's typing for him, and he served his own papers. Once, a white man had Julius arrested for trespassing. He refused to believe Julius was a lawyer, and even if he was, the man snarled, "I won't have no nigger serving me papers." I had to bail Julius out of jail on this one. Even though the trespass charges were dropped, and he won the case against the white races he had served, he didn't feel any satisfaction in his vindication. When Julius was visiting friends in South Carolina, the car his friend was driving was stopped by a policeman in a small-town speed trap, the kind that were always rigged. There was no radar then, no proof, no appeal from the judgment of the local lawman, who was always right. This lawman, however, didn't count on there being a lawyer in the car. When Julius protested that his friend was under the speed limit and that he was a witness to it, the trooper pulled Julius out of the car and beat him to the ground. He then wrote out the ticket and sped away, leaving a battered Julius to the care of our friends. When I found out what had happened, my first instinct was to call my father, that evil cop, that South Carolina cop had no idea what trouble was about to rain down on his brutal head. But then I thought better of it. The last thing Julius wanted was any assistance from my father, even to correct a grave injustice. Julius felt wrongly, I believe, that Strom Thurman was incapable of doing anything helpful as far as blacks were concerned. Though I grieved for my husband's victimization, once more, I kept my mouth shut. Seeking my father's intervention might have caused even more pain at home than Julius suffered on the mean back road. Although Atlanta was only five hours away, it may have been the nerve center of the civil rights crusade, Savannah seemed like a sleepy outpost of Reverend King's empire of activism. Every day, I'd see men on the chain gang fixing the roads. That's what Savannah reminded me of, the chain gang life, the chain gang of life. It was a museum city imprisoned in its own history, incapable of change. Birmingham, Montgomery, Greensboro, that's where the changes were going on. Savannah was too locked into its own time warp to escape. The whites liked it that way, and the blacks didn't comprehend any other way. Julius was deeply frustrated that his efforts were falling on deaf ears. In nineteen sixty-four, our oldest son Julius, then fifteen, became one of the first black students to integrate the high school in Savannah. There were no protests, nor were there any troops. The white people in Savannah were as innovated as the blacks. That summer, we decided to move back to California, which we all had loved so much. We wanted to do the best for our children, and we felt California was the place for them. Even though the Savannah schools were now mixed, I didn't want to raise my children there, nor did I want to go home to Coatsville, not with both of my mothers gone. Besides, there were massive race riots in Philadelphia that year in retaliation to police brutality. The Bull Connors, the brutal Birmingham Police Commissioner who sent attack dogs into a black sit-in of the world, weren't confined to Alabama. I wanted a fresh start, far from the South, far from the East. California was the land of fresh starts and clean slates. I had been happy there before, and had been sorry to have been forced to leave. Julius needed to stay in Savannah until he could settle the remainder of his cases there. I decided to make the trip with the children. I thought it would be a great adventure for them. Before we began our cross-country drive in Julius's old black Dodge that he had purchased from our minister, I went up to Coatsville to say goodbye, and I stopped in Washington, too. Strom Thurman's biggest headline that far in nineteen sixty-four involved the wrestling match he had gotten into outside of the Senate chamber with Senator Ralph Yarborough, who was from Texas but was considered a liberal in the Lyndon Johnson mode, a mode my father would characterize as turncoat. Both my father and Yarborough were sixty-one, but my father, physical fitness fanatic, was far leaner and meaner. He pinned the liberal Democrat to the marble floor and wouldn't let him go until he hollered, "Uncle." Once more, I cringed at my father's behavior and how the public saw him. However, in the South, the people saw him as a champ, and I guess he really cared only about how Southerners felt. Yankees to him didn't count. "I'm sick of fighting the Democrats," he told me when I was in his office. Given his grudge match with Senator Yarborough, he must have mended it literally and figuratively. "We're way better off with the Republicans." He told me he vastly preferred the Republican frontrunner Barry Goldwater to the Democratic incumbent Lyndon Johnston, Johnson, though he did tell me that he found first daughter, Linda Burr Johnson, extremely attractive and couldn't understand why she would waste her time with tanned actor George Hamilton. I had the feeling my father wanted to date her himself, regardless of his attacks on her father, regardless of the huge age gap. He was relentless in that way, in pursuit of a woman, in pursuit of a political result. Now he was relentless in his hatred of the Democrats. He went into a litany of Democratic atrocities. The Democrats cowardly backed down from invading Cuba during the Missile Crisis and lost a great opportunity to free our hemisphere from the Russian threat. The Democrats were plunging us into a pointless war in Vietnam. The Democrats were turning America into a welfare state. The only thing he didn't say was that the Democrats were soft on segregation. I said it for him. "What was that, Essie Mae?" "The Democrats are soft on segregation." "I never said that," he bristled. "Only a million times, Senator. I was leaving for California. Somehow, I felt liberated. I would speak my mind for once, and Julius's mind as well." "You say black people are inferior." "I never said inferior. I said different." "Then what am I?" "Are you all right, Essie Mae? What's gotten into you?" "If you mean what you say, how could you, how could you love my mother?" He didn't speak for the longest time. He just looked like the wind had been punched out of him. It was a question he never expected to be called to answer, and he didn't. He kept silent. He poured some water from a Poland Springs bottle. He offered me a glass. "No, thank you, sir." "You should drink at least three full glasses a day." "Do you look at me as a Negro, Senator?" "I look at you with a lot of pride, Essie Mae," he said, always knowing how to flatter his way out of a tight corner. This time, it wouldn't work. "I hate to say this, sir, but you do realize how black people feel about you?" I asked him point-blank, amazed at my own boldness. "I'm dedicated to the improvement of the Negro race." He was trying to turn this into a campaign speech. I wouldn't- I wouldn't let him. "Black people hate you, Senator. My husband hates you. I tried to speak up for you, but he hates you. Almost all black people do. They don't see you as a friend. They see you as an enemy, their worst enemy. Is that the way you want to be looked at?" He sat silently, astonished at what I was saying. He wasn't angry. He didn't think I was being uppity. He was just stunned. "More and more black people are going to be voting. They want you out of office. Do you want them to turn you out, sir? Because if you don't, you better change your ways." I stood up to go. He stood up. He had the envelope waiting. At first, I refused to take it. He pressed it into my hand. "You'll need this in California." "No, thank you, sir." "A little spirited debate never hurt anybody, S.M.A. I'm glad you spoke your mind. Surely, I speak mine." He flashed a smile at me, putting the envelope back in my hand. "Now, you go back to school like I've been telling you. Just do it." And then he hugged me and kissed me goodbye. "I'll miss you," he said. "Y'all come back now, you hear?" My father's pretty secretary drawled at me as I left to be chauffeured back to Union Station. I didn't know if I would ever be allowed back. Even though he was polite, that was the way politicians were, never showing their true feelings, and Strom Thurmond may have been the most guarded politician of them all. "I may have just seen my father in person for the last time," I thought to myself. The envelope had thousands of dollars, hush money. Julius had angrily called it. There's an old Southern expression, "Hush your mouth," which means to keep your trap shut. I would never go public with my secret, I thought, but at least I hadn't hushed my mouth with my father this time, and I was glad that I hadn't. I would like to feel that my candor with my father had some good effect. Sometime later, when he made his big coming-out speech, as a Goldwater Republican, he never mentioned the word segregation. He made a few of his obligatory references to states' rights and the judicial tyranny of the Supreme Court and creeping socialism. But he didn't make it a black-and-white, as he always previously had done. He didn't use the word negro in a hostile or even paternal sense. He took a high road, talking foreign policy, highlighting the communist threat, denouncing Vietnam, attacking inflation, worrying about old people, fixing income, fixed-income people, plain people who could be black or white. I felt he was talking to me, using this speech to show me that he could change. I knew now that I would see him again and that his days as the point-man for the repudiated doctrine of separate but equal might be coming to an end.
Context of White Supremacy. Somehow, it is two thousand twenty-two, and we still have not reached that day. Continue. Until Justice. Uh, so the number to dial is seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred. D code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. Uh, our narrator wrote in. Excellent work as usual, but she wrote in. She said, "I am now looking forward to finishing this reading." Yikes, I hope she hangs on till the end. I don't want to read. Uh, Chapter Eight was upsetting. We just got through about half of Chapter Eight because of how often S.E.M.A. references forgiveness and being grateful towards Thurmond. Overall, it's an important story with references to so many events, not in Matil, and people in history, so I'm happy it's a part of the book club. Me, too. However, the sad confusion is getting to me, and I can't relate to having a white parent. I'm struggling to deal with the one-sided loyalty in the face of dedicated, of the dedicated practice of white supremacy. This chapter, Chapter Eight, is also sad for her husband, mm, 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 and children and Mary. It is saddest book I've ever read. I think I've been saying it for like a month now. No improvement at all, just every week. Oh, my God. Oh, my God. Like, that's, that's every week, you know? I, what can I say? I can only say in terms of the frustration, that totally logical, I get it, but that is exactly why, before we even heard directly from S.E.M.A. herself, I included that audio of Janetta Rose Barris, because this is not just deadbeat dad, you know? This is not just, oh, we had a little white boy, a white girl, and their white dad dipped out on them, or a little black boy, and President Obama, and there's no count, black dad dipped out, and na, 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 na. This is a non-white female with a raping, child raping, racist, white, I don't know whatever you want to call him, biological contributor who raped her mom when she was fifteen, and then she doesn't even find out about this until she's sixteen years old. Like, that is, we heard it this week. She said, "My very identity, my existence is a, some, is shame. I am illegitimate. My existence is illegitimate and shameful. How in the world do you, I..." Self-respect has been totally annihilated, totally annihilated. Janetta Rose Barris talks about that total... You can't, that's what her husband is saying, you can't even acknowledge who your father imagined, that you get this money, and it's hush money. I feel I have been gagged. Talk about S&M. I've been gagged. I can't even talk about who my father is, not to mention all the racism and all, I mean, saddest book I've ever read. I totally understand the, uh, frustration with, uh, this victim's conduct and the forgiving of, of racist, her racist father and, and racism in general, but I mean, what, what can you expect? This is how we have been, and I mean, this is like real biological conditioning, epigenetics, you know, of a totally different type. Uh, the number again is seven two zero seven one six seven three hundred. D code five six four nine four three pound. Press star six one if you would like to participate. If you have commentary, thoughts, observations to share, do not wait until the last moment. Uh, see Retired Firefighter. Also, we should have with us, uh, the caller at two two six two, two two six two. Uh, all of y'all should be with us. Proceed.
May I be heard?
Yes, sir. Caller two two six two.
Uh, thank you, Gus, for taking my call and, and help everybody on the line. Um, yeah, just again, this is a very sad book if you look at it. Uh, this is a non-white, black female who has been lied to, I'd say lied to by her father, and, uh, this racist, uh, her entire life. Um, I did want to give her a little bit of kudos on when the bus driver attempted to move her out of her seat, and she refused to and demanded her money back. I did want to say, uh, that's a, I guess, a glimpse of some type of black self-respect on her part. Um, but I, from some of her other, uh, statements, I still think she would prefer to be, you know, white, you know, like a lot of non-white people do. Um, she talked about California glowingly, about it being such a land of, of, I guess, opportunities. Um, and I, I wasn't born during that time, so I'm looking at it in California from now, and, uh, for black people, I mean, there's a mass exit of black lead in California. So, uh, I guess maybe that was a little premature. Um, I was thinking also about, uh, the husband Julius and how his drinking kept getting, kept getting worse and worse. Um, I haven't finished the book, so I hope we don't finally have something unfortunate that happened to him by the end of it. Um, yeah, um, that's pretty much all I want to comment on right now. Oh, oh, yeah. Um, when she went to, I guess, Washington, and she used a phrase, um, now I got to see it up close, and it's white marble majesty. Uh, I guess that's more anti-blackness, associating white with, um, I guess, majesty and royalty. And, um, yeah, I guess that's pretty much it. Thank you for taking my call. Uh, Gus, thank you. I'll be Milan.
Those gleaming white monuments in the nation's capital do make an impression. Uh, much obliged, sir. Uh, Retired Firefighter, do you have commentary on the second portion or just listening?
Yes. Uh, once again, uh, very, very disillusioned. Uh, I'm old enough to, uh, to recall the, uh, sixties, uh, especially, uh, the, uh, what I would call the surface culture that whites had on the West Coast, uh, based on a lot of the movies that was go, that was, uh, being played about California during that time, uh, beaches, uh, that sort of thing. Uh, and I'm under, I'm, I'm, I'm under the, the idea in mind that, uh, non-white, black people, uh, in a delusional state actually think that they are, you know, in the same light as, uh, white people are, and we actually aren't. Uh, uh, it never will be actually under a global system of racist white supremacy, but, uh, we have that illusion about the beaches and, and quote-unquote "sun tanning" and that sort of thing, uh, uh, laid-back type of easy-going type of thing, and the truth could, could be no farther away than, uh, me from some, somewhere in Africa, so far away. Uh, uh, from the standpoint of, of, uh, uh, the Black Panther Party started in Northern California, the largest, the largest chapter. I think that the, the chapter in Los Angeles was even, uh, uh, bigger, and, and the motivation to start such an organization was based on, uh, the experiences of young, non-white, black people of racism on a daily basis. Uh, the rebellion that took place in Watts, which is Southern California. I, I mean, where was she during that time in nineteen sixty-five, I believe? Uh, the Watts riots, uh, uh, you know, uh, that went on, uh, you know, I mean, it's just so many things that, a, and I, and I can understand it because there is a lot of delusional, non-white people, uh, right now today, and she's just experienced, she just, uh, is expressing that experience, uh, primarily. That, that's what, that's what we're actually reading, and that's why we have the commentary, uh, of the, of delusion, uh, that we are witnessing. Uh, and it, this is one of the quote-unquote "results" and byproducts of white people, uh, having sex, uh, with non-white people, and not only having sex, but, but, uh, the birth of a child or children from that particular relationship. And, uh, this is what is, it shouldn't be unusual, are the results. Uh, I would say with the husband and what his ambitions are, based on what, what, uh, he, uh, I, I wonder if they stayed married? I mean, uh, with the things that he has to, uh, uh, deal with on a, you know, on a daily basis with the, uh, the monies coming from a, a, a racist, uh, white person, uh, the, the, I think the only thing that keeps it, keeps it from becoming a, uh, situation that would destroy, uh, the quote-unquote marital situation is she doesn't push the idea of accepting the money and doing things with it right in front of his face, you know, that sort of thing. I, I think that kind of like helps it not to, the, the ma, her, their marriage not to, uh, uh, disintegrate. Uh, she gives in, so to speak, it sounds like it anyway. Uh, but, uh, yeah, uh, it's, I, I think, I think the time's now with the book is something like in the mid-sixties. Am I correct on that?
Uh, well, we haven't got to the assassination of Kennedy yet, so we're about nineteen sixty-three-ish.
Oh, okay, so we're early sixty, six, sixty-two, sixty-three, something like that. Okay. Yeah. Uh, political-wise, yeah, yeah. Uh, the last thing I'm going to say is, is our, our career, because they, they, you know, we, we think of Kennedy, you also have to think about his, his wife, and I, and being that, uh, one of, uh, Jim Brown's, uh, teammates has been a, a guest on the program several times, uh, he probably can recall that, uh, it wasn't, it wasn't him and Jim Brown, but another teammate of Jim Brown's at the same time, uh, that's in the NFL Hall of Fame, they got in an argument over the idea of the most beautiful woman in the world or something like that being, being, uh, Jacqueline, uh, uh, Kennedy, and, and arguing over the fact of that, to whereas Bobby Mitchell is the other person. Uh, and, uh, it came to the point where Jim Brown almost, uh, started a fistfight with Bobby Mitchell, uh, uh, over the idea, you know, and it, these are some of the things, these some of the habits that we, that we pick up from being under a global system of racist white supremacy, the confusion, uh, that we, uh, spend a lot of time wasting time, you know, on the subject as opposed to, uh, as opposed to really, uh, uh, having an understanding of what racism is and how it works. Uh, uh, we, uh, basically, uh, uh, fall into a culture where we actually admire them, uh, to a point, and, and I think that's part of her biggest problem that she has, uh, that, you know, that she has this admiration for white people. That's, uh, and that's really is not, not healthy. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Much obliged, Retired Firefighter in Florida, uh, watching a lot of television, having a white parent. Those are things that will definitely promote the admiration of white people and not thinking of them as racists. And it seems like we've got lots of that all throughout this book, uh, raping white people and then TV, 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 at a time when most black people did not have a TV. Amazing. Now, think, now, as much as she's talked about television in this book, think about that for all the folks where you don't just have a television that is like fifty times bigger than the TV that they had at this time, which was none. It's a television in every room, and you're walking around basically with a television in your hand all the time, just on the phone and whatever other tablet and what have you. So if you thought, wow, all the influence of television, as I said, at a time when you didn't have that many TVs and you didn't even have a whole lot of black programming. She's, you know, going berserk over Nat King Cole's show and, you know, a few other tidbits here and there, uh, wow, where you actually do see black people on TV and they maybe aren't cutting a fool, maybe. Reading more important than watching television. See, get to some of the notes that I had for this, get to some of the listeners first, make sure I get all those in. Uh, one of our investors, he wrote in, uh, this is for Chapter Eight, number one. Uh, "The nineteen fifty-seven longest filibuster, the Senate rule, which has been used repeatedly to block legislation that would benefit black people." See, the Senate filibuster is another monument to- that would benefit black people. See, the Senate filibuster is another monument to white supremacy. Tear it down." David Litt in The Atlantic, June seven, two thousand twenty. Number two, Speed Trap. Julius protested that his friend was under the speed limit and they beat him to the ground. As per Mr. Fuller, don't fuss, don't fight, don't flee when dealing with race soldiers." Add your number. Uh, number three, uh, they moved back to California, uh, or they, yeah, moved back to California. Uh, Coatsville, Compton, Savannah, the multiple moves of Essie May and her family reminded me of Mr. Fuller's reference to the movie Western Shane where one of the cattle ranchers says, "Keep those squatters on the move" when referencing or referring to the white settlers. Yep, that is, and I mean, these are like massive, like Coatsville, Pennsylvania, Savannah, Georgia, uh, California, go out to LA, Southern California. We come back, uh, go back to Savannah, go up to, I mean, whoo, like, wow. And at a time when moving was substantially more difficult and cumbersome than it is now and doing this with four children. Yeet. Might want to take that money from Strom Thurmond. That would at least make it a little easier. Uh, let's see. Number four, Strom Thurmond, nineteen sixty-four wrestling match with Senator Ralph Yarborough. There is a picture of these two holding each other's hands in the air and smiling after the so-called wrestling match. Race soldiers do argue and brawl or what have you, and then they get back to the business. Uh, incidentally, did I, I had the snippet of that event. Maybe I'll share a little bit of it later on. Uh, let's see. Number five, oh, didn't get that far. We'll stop there. Maybe I'll get to it now, uh, about that no-count brawl. Uh, so this is on the senate.gov webpage. Senators wrestle to settle nomination. Oh, and the text, "We did get past the Kennedy assassination, but strangely she didn't say anything about that either." I find both of those, Emmett Till, more so, you can't talk about everything in the book, and we are getting close to the end, but those are like two enormous events. I would say in the last seventy-five years, those are probably, if we're talking about events, the Kennedy assassination, like in the world, like that is on the top ten list of like most important events in the last ten, or excuse me, last hundred years in the world. Absolutely. Uh, and it seems like we got over that without saying a word. And then the, uh, Emmett Till's assassination, just because that, even if they're talking about that, that right this week. Uh, are we gonna prosecute Carolyn Bryan Donovan lying about all this? Just this week, her family was in the news. Anywho, the senate.gov website, July nine, nineteen sixty-four, Kennedy has been assassinated. Uh, they talk about this incident. Uh, just give a little snippet. They read right. Uh, "The Senate referred the Collins nomination to its Commerce Committee, whose most senior Southern member was the Southern, South Carolina Senator Strom Thurmond. Collins had angered Thurmond with a speech in the senator's home state in which he charged that Southern leaders' harsh and intemperate language unnecessarily provoked racial unrest." Hmm. "Thurmond, an opponent of the Civil Rights Act and when it was before the Senate, pointed out that Collins had openly supported segregation in the nineteen fifties. Collins responded, 'We all adjust to new circumstances.'" Uh-oh. Commerce Committee Chairman Warren Manginson knew he had the votes to favorably report the Collins nomination to the full Senate. For two days, however, he had tried unsuccessfully to obtain a quorum so that the committee could act. Knowing that the chairman's difficulty, Thurmond stationed himself outside the committee room on July nine, nineteen sixty-four, hoping to block action by turning away late-arriving senators. At that moment, Texas Senator Ralph Yarborough appeared. Yarborough had been the only Southern senator to vote for the Civil Rights Act. The Texan laughingly said, "Come on in, Strom, and help us get a quorum." In a similarly lighthearted manner, Thurmond responded, "If I can keep you out, you won't go in. And if you can drag me in, I'll stay out there." Both men were sixty-one years old, but Thurmond was thirty pounds lighter and in better physical condition. After a few moments of light scuffling, each senator removed his jacket. Thurmond then wrestled the increasingly out of breath Yarborough to the floor. "Tell me to release you, Ralph, and I will," said Thurmond. Yarborough refused. Another senator approached and suggested that both men stop before one of them suffered a heart attack. Finally Chairman Manginson appeared and growled, "Come on, you fellows, let's break this up." Recognizing a great exit line, Yarborough grunted, "I have to yield to the order of my chairman." The combatants did their best to compose themselves and entered the committee room. Although Thurmond had won the match, he lost the day's vote sixteen to one. All of this, I just, we did read Pitchfork Ben Tillman. The Reconstruction of White Supremacy, we read that in the, this is exactly what we read. Duels, remember that? You've offended me. I'm mad. I'm gonna go smack a white man in the face and then we can go have a duel. That was all through, all of these folks have statues. This is what we're celebrating? Brawling and grappling in the floors of, what is this, the House? The Senate? That's what we want, a memorial? Yeah, Strom Thurmond. Woo! Tacky classness rep, that's the whole tradition. It's all like a Dylan Storm roof. What they said, the, the fruit doesn't fall far from the tree. This is what I would expect, South Carolina, through and through. And then the brag, I told you, Preston Brooks that she talked about in the book, the caning of, uh, Sumner, Charles Sumner. They named a town in South Carolina after Preston Brooks, called it Brooksville. That's white culture. Notes that I took for chapter eight, see. Uh, let's see. Okay, chapter eight, no audio difficulties. Was she talking about going back? Man, Julius can't even get promoted. I just read that about the nuclear facility, nuclear bomb-making facility in South Carolina, and Julius in California. You can't tell me he's out in California? And he can't get a promotion? That might be some of the racism that she said was not so obvious. That seems pretty in your face, though. You can't get a promotion and you got a PhD and all the rest of it. You're one of the first Negroes with PhD and you can't get, yeah. Uh, Mary died six months after we arrived. With the savings I had hoarded from my father, I was able to buy her house at a very low price from her estate. Like, she doesn't even say how old she is. But I mean, this is not that much further from when Carrie Butler died. So I mean, it's not like she, Mary didn't live to be a hundred either. Doesn't sound like she lived to be eighty, ninety, none of the above. I mean, man. System of white supremacy racism. Strom Thurmond again, lived to be a hundred and one, almost. And these black people are dying and, and I mean, even for black males, this would be bad, but these are, you got black females dying. Her mom died at thirty-eight? Man. Uh, let's see. She visited, uh, and again, the fact that she's naming the amount of money that her father's giving her and saying that he gave her a thousand dollars and thousands sometimes, that just further reinforces for me that he probably gave her like five thousand dollars, could have even been ten thousand dollars, when he saw her the first time after her baby was born, that she had gotten married, first child was born. Five thou, the lowest figure I will submit, will guess, is five thousand. He easily could have dropped ten Gs on her. He was just running for president, super wealthy. You heard bragging about the real estate. He had lots of money. He easily could have dropped ten Gs on her and probably would have dropped even more than that if she had been white. I don't even think he had children at the time. Five, ten, who knows? And that's not even with the inflation calculator. Again, today's money? I'm saying that I think he probably dropped somewhere in the range of like fifty, sixty thousand dollars and up. But I mean, minimum fifty K. And then all these other, you know, subsequent handoffs and such. Major part of the confusion. She says, uh, "She never took the children back again. Uh, with Julius at home, there was much more tension over my father, who continued to help financially. With four children and little work, we needed some help and I appreciated deeply what he did. His politics aside, hey, you are a parent. Children have to eat, period." I don't want to hear nothing about, you know, dad is a racist and we can't take this money and so we gotta have pride and starve. And children don't want to hear nothing about that. And I totally understand it. Like, take the money, do constructive things and all the rest, especially if white people aren't gonna give you a job. You're getting, we directly indirectly get all of our nickels from individuals classified as white anyway, directly or indirectly. So I mean, hey, whatever. You can give it to me for coming in and working this job. You can give it to me for sitting at home. You can give it to me as your, your, uh, hush money for raping my wife's mother, but you give it to me regardless. So, you know, whatever. Just being honest with myself about that. I can totally understand the frustration and all that, but I mean, hey, let's do something constructive with, take care of these children and, you know. Uh, let's see. Communism, again, that's just name-calling. Uh, I would challenge anybody. Essie May, she's a teacher, Strom Thurmond, teacher, anybody. What is communism? And give me a, a definition that makes sense is gonna hold for all time, that you don't have to come back and change and update every other six months. All that is is name-calling. She said, "I did my best to be away from the television when Julius watched the evening news for fear of seeing my father railing against Reverend King." And getting into a big argument that no one could win. That's saddest book I've ever read. I don't, how do we get into an argument? So Strom Thurmond comes on, "That no-good nigger, King, communist, lying nigger and messing up democracy." So Julius, oh God, there's your father again. How was that an argument? Why, unless you, you know, well, that's just politics. He doesn't really mean that. Quaintelpro is happening in the midst of all of this as well. Continuing. She said, uh, "Her father saw the Civil Rights Act from Eisenhower, German-American president, uh, as a federal assault on his sacred states' rights, the religion of white supremacy." Uh, let's see, insisting that he was acting on principle, the sacred principle of Calhoun, who himself admitted that he saw the blacks as an inferior race that must be protected but not exploited. See, white people don't do any of the protecting. They just do the, if it was about protection, you would set up lots of adequate schools, well-funded schools, to take care of the poorly Negroes. They don't do that. And you certainly wouldn't be coming around and raping Negro children. Uh, let's see. "She used the cow's word. My father seemed like an anachronism from the old South." Like, woo! Cows wouldn't use that one for a while. And I'd have to say, I do not agree. There are tons of individuals like him now and certainly of that time period. Like, he's crushing it. She said he got a million votes for president, crushed it when he went for reelection for senator, stayed in office for a decade. I think he still has the record for longest-serving member of the Senate. What are you talking about? An anachronism? No, I have to pick out some other things that are anachronistic thinking. Going back to the motherland, that is anachronistic thinking in two thousand twenty-two. Many other examples I could give. Uh, let's see. She said that not only is he an anachronism, she thinks he's a laughingstock. Rather than hate him, I pitied him. I don't know, what's pitiful about him? He's a white man. He gets to rape children whenever he wants to. He can marry, uh, go around and groom teenagers, children, to be in sexual activity with them. His first wife, who passed away, married her when she was twenty-two, but she caught his eye at fifteen. That's in his biography. He remarries and gets him another, uh, young thing. Uh, I guess that's next week, we'll be coming up on the remarriage. Uh, he's got enough money to give thousands to his illegitimate nigger offspring that he didn't even see for sixteen years. What's to pity? He was governor, senator, has an institute named after him, ran for president, on the cover of Time Magazine. He has a better life than your husband ever did. What's to pity? I can brawl on the floor of the US Senate? I don't even get discipline. So what? I'm a white man, can do whatever I want, basically. What's to pity? Confusion. Uh, let's see. She said, oh, man, see, this is what I mean, the confusion. This, this is, at least for me, I have not been mad at her in reading this book or frustrated by her. I'll say it that way. Not mad. I haven't been frustrated with her in reading this book because it's just, the sadness is so overwhelming and I expect it. I expect this from black people who have eight black grandparents who are all born in Savannah, Georgia. I would expect this type of confusion still. And she said, that's what she saw, complacent black people. That's what the system produces, conditions us to think and behave that way. TV a big part of it. She says, "I pitied him far more than his wife, when his wife died in early nineteen sixty of a brain tumor. She was only thirty-three." Of course, he married her at twenty-two. Excuse me, twenty-one. Uh, a year older than I was. Now, my father had lost not one, but two of the women he loved far before their time. Now... Again, I mean, nobody wants to think of their mom as just being a victim of rape or what have you, but I mean, hey, this is not. And any, I wouldn't care if he was giving her a million dollars every other month. You are a well-paid victim, compensated victim of child rape. That's all it would be. This is not romance. This is not love. I mean, put that up there. One of the saddest lines in the book, right there. Um, let's see. Strom Thurmond says, "You can't be too right-wing in the cause of freedom." I don't even know what that means. That sounds like, "By any means necessary, preserve white supremacy racism." That's what that sounds like. Uh, let's see, next, white culture. Here we go. He says, uh, "Kennedy is too soft on crime. He railed against JFK. He's in the mafia." The mafia is racism, white supremacy. "He doesn't seem the type," I said, "defending the fair-haired Prince of Camelot." Now, that sounds like white admiration right there. Woo! I liked JFK, but I didn't dare say it. By the way, I did mention Quaintelpro. JFK approved the wiretaps, illegal wiretaps that Robert Kennedy, his brother, carried out on Doc, or Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. before all of them, the three, were assassinated at their respective times. What is that, sixty-three, sixty-eight, sixty-eight? Uh, but yeah, let's not think about JFK. He's a friend to the nigger. Get out of here. Or Bobby Kennedy. Get out of here. Uh, he's their alter, he's their boy. She was, oh, wait a minute, let me give that. So she liked JFK, but she didn't say it. "His best friends, Frank Sinatra, my father said with a sneer." Frank Sinatra's a singer, not a mobster. I liked him too. Now, he was off limits as well. Liked Frank Sinatra, who didn't like Old Blue Eyes. Remember I said that before? She's mentioned Frank Sinatra before in this book. What I mentioned is, hey, Frank Sinatra, Woody Allen, Strom Thurmond. What do these folks all have in common? Oh, their affinity for that child rape thing. Got it, got it, got. Frank Sinatra, we talked about that before. He married Mia Farrow, who eventually married Woody Allen, but he married Mia Farrow when Frank Sinatra was approaching fifty. Mia Farrow was seventeen. That would be a constructive reason, a logical reason to say, I don't get out with Frank Sinatra. I don't get out with Old Blue Eyes. I don't know. I don't get it with him too tough. Not, oh, he's a, he's a mafia member, you know, he's gang, gangster. He's all with that. He's their boy. I don't get out of it. What? What? The red shirts are mobsters. Let's see. She even says she got offended when he referred to Sinatra as their boy. Next, normally talking about us when they do all that boys and gals talk. Um, she said, he said, "We," it's just, oh my God. This is the saddest book I've ever read. Before, she said her, when Strom Thurmond referred to her as his daughter, and she gets all weak and emotional and, oh, he does care about me and all that. This time around, I guess he's grieving his young wife that he groomed has passed away, and he's grieving, I guess. And he says, yes, we know how it is to lose someone, talking about the death of Carrie Butler. Uh, and she says, "We," oh, he used the "we." Yes, we both can, uh, and I mean, again, she has lost everyone. Mary has died. Carrie has died. She didn't have anybody. She didn't have a whole lot of people, period. Old Strom is about all she has. And he's half of her genetic material. I get it. I totally get it. I don't have any, you know, frustration about that or, it's saddest book I've ever read in a total indictment, sexual, swirling. Are you serious? It does not get any better than tacky. Not get anything else. Uh, oh my goodness. Talk about details. One thing that I think might be happening, because we are getting close to- One thing that I think might be happening, because we are getting close to the end, we might have one, maybe two sessions left if I don't boost the audio again. Like, I said, she didn't mention Emmett Till, I was like, man, how did that happen? She didn't mention JFK got assassinated, apparently this is her guy that she likes, right? Um, dang, these are major omissions, I have no idea how we are gonna get through the last portion of this book. Because we have like 40 years of history to cover, right? We haven't got Dr. King's assassination and the rest of what happened during the so-called civil rights movement, how all of this comes out about she's gonna acknowledge that she is her debt, like, it's gotta be a whirlwind going through from now down the homestretch. In my view, they should have maybe made the book a little bit longer or left out some other information. I don't know what that would have been, because I mean, wow, there's so many momentous moments in the text, but those are two I feel like have to. If we're gonna talk about the lynching of Zachariah Walker and the other two, like, JFK is a sad, at least, this is where I was, this is what we were doing when he was assassinated and how it impacted things, at least one paragraph, and Emmett Till, like, oh, it's gotta be two paragraphs. Anyway, she says, one of the omissions, all of that, and it seems like there could've been a few more details. She talks about this case that Julius worked, where a black boy was blundered by a white man who threw a lie in his face. I would've just liked the name, right? Isn't that, is that, is that too 21st century? Say, say his name, am I too 21st century? Like, give me a footnote, it's gotta be a newspaper clipping, something, in The Defender or whatever, like, what was this person's name? Give me some of, I was trying to find the case, but I struggled because I couldn't, you know, I didn't have a name, footnote. Uh, let's see, anything else? Oh yeah, the beating was your, ugh, ugh. The black males do not have anything positive to report in this book. Emmett Till, I'm not even asking for inclusion of anything constructive, they're derelicts, houseless, lynched, castrated, nothing good. I think Mr. Perry is the only one, and he gets sent off to war. He hasn't, he could've been married to Essie Mae, but he gets sent off to fight Adolf Hitler. Like, none of the black males in this book have anything good to say at all. Julius tries to stand up, hey, man, he wasn't even speeding it, I'm gonna report you, what nigger? Pow, beat the hell out of him, whoa, I'm an attorney, I'm married to the senator. Black male privilege, is that? We've made a lot of progress, right? They don't still do that to the Negro 2022, they don't have those problems, right? With black people getting, because we've been doing the talk for 50, was it about 70 years now, right? We've been doing the talk, they don't, we don't still have that problem, black people getting mauled and beat up. I guess now, I wouldn't have had to say what I just said about the little black boy that got the lie thrown in his face. Now, we would've had HD dash cam and body cam footage of Julius being snatched out of the vehicle, maced, beaten, tased, and then we could've gone on social media and caused the ruckus about it. Maybe they charge him, maybe they don't. Let's see, anything else? Oh, we got one more, she said, although Atlanta, gotta love AT, what's, what good she had to say about Atlanta? Although Atlanta was only five hours away and may have been the nerve center of the civil rights crusade, Savannah seemed like a sleepy outpost of Reverend King's empire of activism. Every day I see men on the chain gangs fixing the roads. That's what Savannah reminded me of, the chain gang life. Good Lord! Anything, black males in this here book doing anything, ever? Okay, well, I'm not, it's not a criticism of Essie Mae, it's just, good God, like, this book, I said, you could totally put this book in the section of black misandry. Like, Jesus Christ, we have had, what, 30 years now of Zachariah Walker, lynched, took his penis. William, Willie Earle, lynched him, probably took his penis too, butchered him to death. Black male, I forgot his name, the black male, she said, they were gonna go snatch him from the jail and lynched him, accused him of raping a white woman, turns out he didn't even do anything. Count untold numbers of black males all over, from Pennsylvania down to South Carolina, derelict, houseless, no job, drunkards. Julius, he doesn't do any of that, he goes to law school, graduates, I'm trying to uplift and help and be upstanding, care, made his best I can and can't do nothing, gotta depend on my racist, raping, white father-in-law to support the family. I get lied to about that, I try to stick up for my black friend in the back of the car as a passenger and they almost beat me to death. Black male privilege? Because they say, that's, that's like the heyday, right? Stokely Carmichael, black females ain't got no place but on their back. This is like the heyday of black male privilege? Anything else? She said, "The whites liked it this way," that's exactly what Mr. Fuller said, "Things are this way not because we are not able to change them." This could've been corrected a long time ago. Strom Thurmond, individuals classified as white like things this way. Walter Scott, Dillon Storm Roof and all of it. She said, "Whites liked it this way, the blacks didn't comprehend any other way." Julius was deeply frustrated that his efforts were falling on deaf ears. I just, blacks didn't comprehend it any other way. When you got Strom Thurmond, Ben Tillman, white millions who say, "We will die before we let you go to school." Yeah, you might have a whole lot of black people who are stupid and do not accurately underthink, understand things, including Gus T. Last thing, she said, "White people in Savannah were enervated as were the blacks." Now, this was about Julius being one of the first black students to so-called integrate the high school at Savannah. In this context, enervate means to feel drained of energy or vitality. I submit that that is not accurate. White people in Savannah or anywhere else, at this time, 2022, I have never seen any evidence that white people are lacking vitality and energy to combat white supremacy racism. And in fact, same thing that was said at the beginning, John Hockenberry also accused of sexual misconduct. Strom Thurmond didn't lose the war. White people were not enervated. Nikole Hannah-Jones, who has a white parent just like Essie Mae Washington Williams, she has done lots of reports way before the 1619 Project, saying, hey, so-called school segregation is the same or worse now than it was 60 years ago. So no, white people were not enervated, what they did was build lots of private schools and move things around so either their children were not in the same school with Negroes or they were not in the same class, which is why we have a report, I think, this weekend talking about so-called advanced classes in the AP classes, you got the same thing, no Negroes or one Negro. And that, that's not just in South Carolina, that's widespread problem and has been for decades since I was in school. So enervated, great, we got any folks, younger listeners? Hey, put that one, oh, they are canceling the SAT, so you might not have to take that, ACT and all those standardized tests, you just put that one in the bank to use for your own vocabulary, strengthening your word choice, but no, white people, Strom Thurmond lived to 100, or almost 101. He was not lacking vitality as a race soldier. Pause there, we'll wrap, we will not wrap up, we probably have two or three of these left. Anyway, uh, oh, wait a minute, I didn't even get it. Last two I'll get it and then we can wrap up. She said, she has this next conversation with her father, and she says, "Did you, or how could you love my mother?" And she says, he didn't speak for a long time and all that. She, this, she keeps coming back to this repeatedly. I don't think Strom Thurmond had the heart to just keep it real, like, you're a Negro. Because she asked, "Do you see me as a Negro?" Of course, I already told you that. You asked me to go to Clemson? What is wrong with you? Are you thick? Of course, he keeps talking to her like she's stupid, she made a point of that last week. But of course, do I have to spell it out for you? Yes, you're a nigger woman, Carrie was a nigger woman. We've loved raping nigger women for years. You're my favorite nigger woman, or maybe Carrie was my favorite nigger woman, but you're still a nigger. Being confused about that, being unwilling to accept that, Dr. Wellesley talked about that, how we conditioned to not be honest just with ourselves. Did you lo-- what are you talking about? You can't even take five, like I said, hey, oh, you're not feeling well? I'm all about health and vitality and eat these llama beans, eat this cabbage, get those Brussels sprouts, put that fried chicken down, you can't even get me a doctor, I'm your best side piece and you can't even, oh, let me get you a doctor, you can't go to my doctor, you know, we'll get you some, somebody up there in Pennsylvania or whatever, wait for me. Fine, you could do it that way. You got thousands, that's probably some of it too. I let the little nigger woman of your mom die and didn't look out for her, whatever, so here, take, you know, $10,000 here, let me make sure I tell you, don't eat that fried chicken, don't eat that fried chicken, don't eat that fried chicken. All that, but I mean, God, and again, this in my, it's not a critique of her, this is what I expect when you have confused someone in, I mean, this is exploitation in the worst way. The other, so the whole Negro, "Did you love my mother?" gets that one, and then when she does the whole thing about black people hating you and changing all that, like, I don't even care. I got the, I'm pretty sure Carrie Butler's parents hated Strom Thurmond. Anybody out there with offspring, a white man is raping your daughter or son at 14, 15 years old, I'm sure if you hate anybody, you hate that white man, that white woman. Strom Thurmond's not ignorant about that. White people are not ignorant about that. We get confused about that, but, I've been making it my business to have you all suffer so you can clean my toilets, and I can rape your children generation after generation, and you think that I think you all like me? Think I'm your homie? If anybody's confused about racism, almost done with the book. Much obliged for folks' patience, as I said, watch the audio, I will have it correct next time, in fact, the archives probably will be straight. Much obliged to our narrator for doing a spectacular job. Hopefully I won't botch the great recordings anymore. Other folks, we'll be here for tomorrow for neutralizing workplace racism, should be back same time next Thursday to continue. I think we have two more segments and then we should be all done. With that, sobriety would be best under conditions of white supremacy, that is one right there. If you want to take care of your kidneys, eating well, put that fried food down, no In addition to being sober, if you're out and about, no confrontations with strangers, we should be thinking, hey, this person's out being rowdy and hostile, they might be armed. If you didn't leave your residence prepared to kill and/or die and face down a potential armed mob, person might not even be by themselves, hey, exit. You can call enforcement officers as you are exiting. If you're in a vehicle, you're buckled up, you're sober, you are not on the mobile phone, we need all of our attention, mindful of what's happening around us, and we're doing the small things that we can to minimize contact with race soldiers, badge or no. All of that said, Creator, we ask that you help us remain patient with other black people, victims of white supremacy. We ask that you help us remain patient with ourselves. Remind us to demonstrate the highest levels of black self-respect at all times, in all places, each and every time we are in contact with another black person. It has been time, replace white supremacy with justice immediately. Cal signing out. Thanks all for tuning in.